All right. Mean to order, please rise for the place of allegiance. Where's allegiance?
The Republic, for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll call please.
Dr. Craftries.
Yes.
Charlotte Crane.
Here.
Dr. Everwine.
Here.
Todd Emerson.
Here.
Mr. Ferella.
Here.
Ellen Ladazori.
Here.
Elizabeth Lansbury.
Here.
John Mason. Stephen Morantz.
Here.
Elizabeth Oaks.
Here.
Robert Ronzio. Mr. Stewart.
Here.
Sarah Tucker.
Here.
Billy Weatherall.
Here.
Rich Peters.
Here. We have a quorum. Okay. First up, is there any comments from the audience? I'm hearing that. Right, so first up is the personnel report, and obviously, we're gonna start the superintendent search if you wanna go get. Franzoni, first up is John Franzoni. And like I said, we'll have ten questions. Fifteen minutes is what we're, he's got an hour, but it gives its time for an intro and follow-up afterwards. Also, we'll go around, because not everybody was involved with the search, so we'll go around and just introduce yourself, just real quickly, your name and group media. So he, I know he's got faceplates there, but. John. John Franzoni will have a chance to go around and introduce everybody else. I just wanna point out that Paul will be, give you like a nod for four minutes and a down to five. Okay, so you know, so time for you to introduce. We'll follow up at the end. Questions, that's sort of coming in at five. But you got fifty minutes, five minutes, if you get some quick questions. Okay. So I'm Rich Peters.
Rich.
Paul Ferella.
Martha Craftries.
Hi, John, Jacob Bryan.
Charlotte Crane.
Mr. Stewart.
Liz Lansbury.
Todd Emerson.
Ellen Ladazori.
Sarah Tucker.
Stephen Morantz.
Kim Weatherall.
Liz Oaks.
Director of Finance.
Liz Sweet Blake Davis.
Hey, would you like to start up with a introduction to her?
Um, my name is John Franzoni, as you know, I'm the superintendent currently of the North Berkshire School Union, which is a collaboration of five independent rural school districts of Clarksburg, Florida, Monroe, Savoy, and Row. I've been doing this work for seven years. I think that's something that really is a key factor for me in this process, and it's something that really led me to be interested in this position when it became open. It's obviously a well-respected and an excellent district. Everything I've done to look into it over the last two months has really led me to know it better than my past experiences, which have all been positive. Started off as a, as a coach where I was very involved through interactions with Wacona, and it's led to my administration positions, which have all been interacting quite often with the rural districts to deal with some of the similar problems that you have in your districts that I have in mine. And I think, you know, one thing that happened was when the start of the year came, I wasn't really looking for a new job. When this one came open, a lot of things have changed recently in my, my life. Moving to this area was part of that, from the North Adams area up to Pittsfield. And just spending some time over the last few months at the school, and the district has really made me interested in this position. And I think that my background, the key thing is that it fits with what you're dealing with here, and what I've experienced over the last seven years as a superintendent, has led me to this point. And I'm really honored to be part of this finalist group as interviewing for this important position, and I look forward to talking to you more about my qualifications as part of this interview.
Okay, great, so we'll, I have assigned questions around the table. Start again. A lot of like five minutes per. Sure. It's, you go over, you go over, but you. Okay. So first up is, what stands out to you about our district's unique assets and challenges? And why do you believe you're still set as a good match for our district? Kinda answered some of that already, but sure.
I think that, as I mentioned, my communities are all rural towns. They are very similar in their makeup to what you have here. We have one town that is the largest town that makes up our union, which is Clarksburg, is about fifty-four percent. I know Dalton is a big percentage of, of your regional district here. So there's similar challenges that you have to deal with when you have one town that is a little larger than the rest of the towns that are involved in the, in this case, a regional district, in my case, a union. So I deal with it on a daily basis. I have five school committees and five finance committees, five select boards, and town administrators, and all different positions that I work with, and along with my four schools, which is the most important part of the job, obviously. I think going around to the schools last week was a great experience. I'm glad that we got to see all five of the schools as part of those site visits, because it really showed the unique qualities of each of them. I think, Rich, you described it as the elementary schools as being small, medium, and large. And it is true, there's a, there's definitely different dynamics to all the elementary schools. Craneville reminded me of my experience being the principal at Brayton Elementary in North Adams, because it's a large, you know, largest elementary school. There's a lot going on with programs in the, in the building. It's a very active school. Going to Kittredge was great, seeing the, the early childhood program along with some of the other classroom learning. And I really enjoyed it because we were there in the morning, and being a former math teacher, I got to see a lot of math instruction and some really great work in the classroom that was going on that. I think that the uniqueness of these towns is, is that when I took my job that I have now, I became very aware soon enough that I was from North Adams. I wasn't from these small towns. So it was important for me to go into these towns and to learn about them, to develop communication and trust with the individuals, not just in the school, but in the community, because there are a lot of concerns, obviously, about what's gonna happen when you're a small district. How are you going to, in this case, sustain themselves? Because they're so small, and they're constantly worried about, will they be able to continue on as an independent district? During the course of my time, I really developed a lot of trust in this position by going to meetings, by connecting with people, by developing plans of communication with all stakeholders in the towns, so that I can learn about them and help them with, not just the challenges in the school, but also challenges between making it work and be sustainable financially, so we can support our schools appropriately and educate our children the way they need to be educated in the modern, the modern way education is presented. I think that the only way you can do this really is to go out and to be in those meetings, be in these, these situations. Last night, as an example, I was emailing in my largest town, Clarksburg, the Select Board, Finance Committee, School Committee, a whole set of financial information, along with a narrative to prepare us for a joint meeting we're having tomorrow night. Because obviously, it's budget season, there's a lot of challenges that go along the budget season, and we have some key issues to talk about tomorrow night. And because those positions are not full-time positions, they're, they're elected in these small towns, but they also need to have the information presented to them in a timely manner, so they can take time to look at what the situation is, what we're asking from the school point of view, and how we can work together with the town to, to exist within their financial structure. Because we know that the schools are always the largest part of a town budget, right? In our small towns, we have to make sure that we're aware and understand that we have an important role. It's not just a community hub, as a place where we educate our youngest children, but also how we can understand their financial situation and how we can work together. So I think that's a big part of it, is this is part of how I live every day. What you're doing here, I've used as a model recently, because I've been leading an effort to try and do a seven-town North Berkshire regional study, to try to look at sustainability and how we can work together to collaborate more, and even communicate that we're trying to explore a regional agreement option, which is not an easy conversation to have in these small towns, but it's something that we have to have to educate our children going forward, especially in my towns where we have some aging infrastructure that really needs to be addressed. So I think that as far as the uniqueness of these districts, I've been working with that on a daily basis, and I think that makes me a good fit for this position going forward.
Any follow-up? Pick a question. Okay, next up.
Given today's environment and unprecedented uncertainty, how do you maintain financial sustainability when facing growing demand for student services where a community strongly resists budget increases?
Again, it's my everyday life in this position for the last seven years, so and I think as I've covered a little bit, it's, it's all about having these conversations throughout the year. We start talking about our budget as early as possible in the fall to start thinking about what the schools need, what the towns are prepared to allow for their budget, and how we can use the resources that we have to meet these needs. I'm currently involved in three teacher negotiations because of the way our districts are set up. We have individual contracts at each of our schools, because they're all separate districts. So we, that becomes part of the conversation with financial sustainability too. How do we appropriately compensate our teachers, but also fit within the structure of the finances of the town and the school? So it's something that is really important that we are taking care of our teachers, because I'm always very impressed with the way that we maintain staff. We've had very little turnover during my first six years, now in my seventh year. And recently, though, you can see some things starting to change. We've had very, last summer, we probably had more turnover through retirement primarily than we've had. So we have to make sure that we are doing our best to keep our good staff. We have twenty staff members that we share. There's six in my office that are shared between the five districts. There are another about thirteen or fourteen that work in specialists, special education, and a variety of educational support services throughout the districts. And that allows us to have full-time 1.0 equivalent positions that is, allows those people to stay. And I'm always amazed at their dedication to travel between two, three, four schools on a regular basis. And I saw a little bit of that last week in your schools as well, because there were definitely some shared positions. Obviously, it's within one district and not between four or five. But one of the things we've tried to do over the last couple of years too is to help them be more efficient as well. We've developed plans where we share some expenses, payroll, for example, so we're not, like, when I first started, I was getting five paychecks, so one from each town, which obviously is not very efficient, doesn't, doesn't sit very well with the retirement system. And so it was one of the areas that we identified, working together with the business administrator, to try to take care of our staff, that they were going to get a paycheck from one town instead of five different ones. And we've had that in place for the last five or six years, along with a shared plan to pay the, the expenses that are covered by more than one district. And this has all allowed us to be more efficient and to try to address some of these issues that we have in our districts. Another area we're trying to use is grants and private funding. During my time as both a principal and a superintendent, I've had success with getting grants to support breakfast in the classroom in my job as a principal. It was a key collaboration with our food service director, where we got grants from the Dairy Association and the NFL Play Sixty. It's an example, just go out and find money wherever it may be, through whatever innovative practice we can. And that allowed us also to have a free dinner program in my former school in North Adams that fed students three meals a day, along with a healthy snack, in a district that had seventy-five percent of the families who needed some type of assistance. So we knew that we had to feed our students, so they'd come into the school every day and be fed and be ready to learn and feel supported at that school. I also have had some partnerships with a private donor. We had a plan where we received iPads that were used to educate our early childhood learners. It was through a connection with alumni in the school, and it's another example of just ways we can be innovative. Also done a lot of work with Burke Twelve in the county, because it's really difficult for our schools, being so small, to have professional development. And that's allowed us to have some really good opportunities for our teachers to be educated at very reasonable and low cost for our schools. And the last one I wanna highlight is, I've always had a connection through the Northern Berkshire United Way, and that led to a connection for myself on the state level that has earned our districts over a half a million dollars over the last three summers. That has helped us grow a summer program. When I first got there, I had forty students in it across three or four different schools. And then last year, we had almost a hundred and thirty students that participated in the summer, getting their services in the morning, but also being provided with a, a number of outdoor activities and good learning experience that these children would not receive if it wasn't for the money that we went out and got through a grant through the State United Way organization. So these are some of the ways that we're trying to become more sustainable and just start to be working with our towns first, but then it comes and trying to be innovative in increasing our funding opportunities.
Any follow-up on this question directly? Seeing that, okay, next up.
Next. What is your experience with strategic planning, and how would you approach this work in Central Berkshire?
Well, I see this as a similar as when I came into my current job. I've been looking on your website and seeing that you have some plans in place already that have been developed. I looked, took through a very thorough process. And when I came into my current position, they were in the third year of a, of a three-year strategic plan. So we took the time to evaluate how the plan was working. You know, for me coming in new, one thing I would wanna do right off the bat is to do a similar model that I learned when I completed the three-year superintendent program through the state when I first got this position, where you develop an entry plan. And you go in and part of the entry plan is to really learn about the district where you're coming into, take time to interview a variety of stakeholders, school committee, teachers, admin, and also community members too, as well as families and anybody else that wants to come and meet at various points where you set up throughout the districts. And I just had three simple questions I asked when I did the entry plan was, what's working? What do you think the strengths are of the district? You know, two, what were the areas that could use a little more attention? And maybe there are some challenges that we have? And then three, how do we get there? And we accumulated data through that process, along with meeting with the admin and the teachers and everybody in the schools about how these questions could be answered and how we could use that information to develop our next strategic plan and to allow us to really target it and focus it on what are the big issues in our school, where are our strengths, and where are the areas that need more focus going ahead? I think that would be something I would try to do similar in this position here. And I think one of the areas that we really have to struggle with, with these strategic plans and school improvement plans, how do we make them meaningful? And I think by involving a lot of people in the process, a lot of stakeholders in the process, we can make it be something that they can use and be something that is a part of our school. I know when I became a principal at Brayton, I told a story, I think it was in my application package, that within a week of being named principal, the school was identified as needing assistance by the state because of the, the spring assessments that they had taken. And so we, you know, a lot of times in that situation, you go and all of a sudden you start looking at that, and where do we go? And we did that. We looked at where our challenges are and what we're doing well. But we also tried to look at the whole community and the, the whole school, and what was in need there. And we identified, obviously, that we have a lot of families in need. So how can we better connect? So we identified that two-way communication was a key for us. We identified that we had to feed our students, we had to get out in the community and really welcome everybody in, so they felt safe and a part of the school community, because our take was that, given the situation these families were in, maybe they did not have a good connection with the school, and you could see it because of some of the events and activities at the school were not well-attended. We got ourselves out and really made good connections, we developed positive trust with our families and actively involved them in the, in the school. And that was just as important as the fact that we use data to identify fractions as, as a weakness in math and writing skills as a weakness in ELA, and we focused on those areas across the curriculum to help our students make improvements. But I think a big part of it is that we want our students available to learn. And we took the time to identify the causes of what was limiting their learning. And within three years, that's Brayton's Elementary School, it went from being the assistance to being a model school in a turnaround, and it came to the one point of being a Level One school under the old accountability system. So I think that's what strategic planning to me is about, is really taking the time to get out and learn about your schools, learn about your communities, learn about your children, and then involve all the stakeholders and making a plan going forward that will address those needs and allow us to be successful.
Any follow-up on this one? Let's see.
How do you ensure high-quality instruction and learning that continues to meet the curriculum framework standard in ELA, math, science, but also in other disciplines such as social studies or health?
I think some of the things we talked about already, but also, I know there's a lot of this is involved around the issue of MCAS not being a graduation requirement anymore. And we know that has caused a lot of conversation and focus over the last six months since that vote was taken. And like, for example, today I was reading on my, the weekly MASSS, Mass Association of School Superintendents, email that they were highlighting the governor's executive order to create this, I'm gonna make sure I say it right, Mass K-12 statewide graduation council. So there's gonna be information coming from the state that's gonna be meaningful and helpful towards what are gonna, going to be the competency determinations for graduation. But also, it's important that we're doing our work on a local level, and I'm sure that you have been here as well because of the need and the importance of this standard to be met with our students. I think that assessments are an important tool. I'm, I'm, yeah, I'm sort of, I'm a proponent of MCAS not being a graduation requirement. I think that if we wanna have equitable systems for our students, and while this is an important tool to measure student learning and, and growth, it's also, I think it's important that we have another means and another method to evaluate whether or not a child, a student should graduate. And I think we can do that work if we're doing it together. And part of that comes through identifying internal assessments that we can do, looking at our curriculum maps. I was looking at the districts again for what you use here. And obviously, we have a lot of connections with the Mass State frameworks, and it's clear that you've done a lot of good work to make sure that in your, all of your schools, that these standards are being adhered to and instruction is designed around these frameworks each day. I also think that an important part of it is the evaluation model. And I don't mean evaluation because you're going in and telling people what they have to do. I mean, evaluation model, as it's set up now, because as an administrator, it really allowed me to make connections, better connections with my teachers when I was a principal, and so allowed me to continue those connections as a superintendent, because as I'm evaluating the principals, it gets me in the classroom, so I can see instructions. So the day that Rich and I had walking around to all the different schools and viewing classrooms, you do that on a regular basis. And that way, you get out of your office and see what kind of learning is going on in your school, so you can work together in a proactive, positive way to ensure that instruction is meeting the standards that were required to deliver each day. I think that that's a really important piece of what administrators have to do, is to be connected with their families, I mean, with their families, with their students and their administration. And I think it's important that the superintendent is working together with the principals to support the teachers in their work. It's, there's a lot into it. I mean, change is always difficult, change is always a challenge. And I think it's important that we're working together on navigating these changes in our, our system that we have right now. And while it's created, I'm sure, some angst and anxiety, it's something that's, I think it's an opportunity for us to grow, because education is changing. I think just having an assessment that tells us if graduation is appropriate for a student is not the model we wanna use going forward. We need a variety of experiences, and I saw that at the high school. There was a clear indication that we designed the learning spaces around modern education. There is, I saw that in the library, there's an opportunity for students to take virtual classes. And there's some hands-on learning downstairs in several of the classrooms that are in Wacona. And there's just a lot of programs, a work-study program, others that are clearly showing that as a district, you're trying to meet the needs of all of your students. And one of the things I looked up today, and I thought was an interesting stat, was it said that forty-four percent of jobs in mass require skills training more than high school, and only thirty-four percent of mass workers are trained at that level. So how do we get the skills to our students that will help them to be prepared beyond school and not just go into college, but also going into career? And I think that's one of our challenges that we have to continue to look at as part of our curriculum, to give them the skills they need and the basic skills of the ELA and math, everything that we do every day, but also what kind of skills are we building with them to develop and make them ready for their careers and to be individuals outside of school?
Follow-up on this one? I have one. In that article, what were the skills that were missing?
It was a little generic, I'll say that. It was talking about just that, you know, talking about what schools need to do to give students more hands-on experiences that could be, give them the technical. It was more of a career and technical aspect they were looking at, and looking at some vocational opportunities that they could have. But it was also talking about how those skills don't only come in the vocational schools, they can also come in the public high schools to help students be ready. I know one of the things that we deal with in North Berkshire is that a lot of students wanna go to McCann. I know you have some students from here that go to McCann also, but they can't all get in, because McCann is full. So how do we, we provide those same opportunities for them in our public high schools, so that we can build those skills and have them be ready for the workforce? I think it's, you know, there's just innovative ways to do it, using the computer, using those, I would say, call them career-minded classrooms, and trying to get more kids involved in the, I think, the work-study program too, are ways that we can help to, help our students build those skills. And I think more information is needed too.
Thanks. Next up. Steve.
How have you built lines of communication in past roles? And how would you gather public feedback, sustained support, and work with district stakeholders and municipal officials?
I covered a little bit, I think, with the, the entry plan, which I would plan to do here as well. I also would, I think a key part of it is to, again, make sure you're getting involved in your, not just your school committee meetings, but also your town meetings, your finance committee meetings, you're coming to the school and getting involved in meetings at, at the school level as well. And making yourself available so that you can know what is going on throughout the whole district. I've known, I've seen you being involved, Dave, with the, the regional agreement. And I think that's something that if I was in this position, I'd wanna be involved in that too, to learn about, you know, what are the challenges? I think I know some of them from the conversation, but also, you know, what are the ways that we can try to work together to get to, come to an agreement, and it works for all the towns? And I think that if I go back to my experience in this position again, was when I was hired at MBSU as a superintendent, there was a, there was a strong internal candidate. So when they took the original vote, I think it was eleven to two to one in my favor. And then, of course, the people that voted were the three school committee members that were in the town for the internal candidate, which was, it's good. They should support their candidate, and she was a very viable candidate. But when they voted again, and it was unanimous, I made sure that they were the first person, I shook their hand and said, I'm looking forward to building some trust, because I'd heard during my time investigating that position, that there had been some trust lost between that district and the central office. So it was important for me to get out of the office, get involved with those individuals. I remember sitting on one of the committee members' ports in the summer of that first year, just hearing about what were the issues that they had faced in the past, and how could we get past that? So I think that's the, my main point of communication, is getting out and having conversations with all stakeholders, learning about what's happened in the past, and how can we make things better in the future? I do think it's also important that the communication is coming from all levels of our schools, though. One of the main strategic objectives that we've had across the two plans I've developed for my schools in the last seven years is two-way communication between our teachers and our families. And I started developing that back when my days as a principal, because we need to involve the families and the, actively in the education of their children. As an administrator, I know that if I receive a call as a superintendent, or previously as a principal, and I'm the first person that that family has talked to, then we're, we're failing. Because we need to be communicating with our families to know who the children are better, to share positive things that the families are doing, to welcome into our classroom at the start of the school year. And that helps us to get to learn who the child is, who the family is. How can we discover what were the challenges they had in the past? And we have to back that up with how we act as administrators, and how we model our communication, so that we know supporting our teachers in this work as well. And I think that's important, that we have communication at all levels, with our families, with our communities, with our town leaders. And that's how we become trusted parts of our communities, and not just somebody that's taking a job because it was open. And that's what I've always tried to do when I've worked in different positions through leadership, is to let people know that we're here to do the job right, and we're here to do the job by learning about what you need and how can we help? And you can't do that unless you're, you're involved directly with communication. I also, one thing I try to do with my current position in the school committees, because they're spread out, there's, you know, our joint committee is fifteen individuals as well, and five different towns, is on a regular basis, try to share emails that are pertaining to relevant issues in the, in the state. I just got an email today from one of my members in Row, asking about the MASSE interview yesterday about regional agreements and approval through the towns, and how does. um, through the towns and how does that impact us? And I said, no, I said, one of the things that you have to understand is we are not a regional, uh, district. And she's one of our new members and we, we talked about it and explained the differences. And she's helping with, you know, being involved with the Mohawk Trail Sustainability Study that Row is involved with. And it was a good conversation about how we've explored the idea of Row becoming a member in grade seven through twelve and some of the benefits that that would, that would, um, help in that district. And, uh, so it was important that we had that direct conversation so I could explain to her, why that change would be needed in Row and how it could benefit them. And that's again, and that's just another example of how we're constantly communicating with our, uh, school committees and all stakeholders to help them understand that type of communication better.
Can you follow up on this one? Do you have any? Okay.
How would you ensure that all students, regardless of background, abilities or circumstances, have access to the resources, opportunities and safe and welcoming school environments they need to succeed?
I feel like it was important, every student should have at least one person in the building they trust, that they're connected with, that they feel they can go to with any situation they have. When I walked around these buildings, I saw principals who were very connected, uh, with their, with their school communities, with their teachers and with their staff. And it seemed like this, this, the teachers and the staff as well had developed that connection as, and as well with their students. Again, going back to the consistent two-way communication is a big part of that work that we do. And I think it's important that, uh, we really model that and continue that as part of our plan. I know there's a lot of information, I was at a school committee meeting, I think it was on March thirteenth, where there was a good discussion about, uh, your D E I B, um, committee and the policy we're developing. And it was a, uh, I thought a really thoughtful, you know, explanation by, uh, both Leslie and Mike about, uh, uh, I think it was a question from a community member about the, the policy that was being developed. And I thought it was really well stated how the policy was trying to make sure it was addressing, meeting the needs, welcoming all students, making everybody feel safe and supported in our schools. And staying out of the, obviously, politics that have become such a unfortunate prevalent, um, issue in our schools and our society. So I think that's important. I've always tried to tell my communities, because one thing I realized very quickly is that sometimes rural communities are a real hotbed for politics and different viewpoints. And it's important, I've always believed that we keep politics out of our schools. We try to teach our kids, um, how to think and ways to think. But we don't want to teach them what they should be thinking. And we want to make sure that people, they feel safe and supported in making those decisions. And these policies are a big part of that. And also making sure that these policies are enacted, but they're also have a buy-in in our schools and our, across our communities. Because it's so important that our school, our schools are safe places for our families and our, and our children. A lot of things are changing in our world right now and it's important that we are modeling that, that families know that we don't just have a piece of paper that has a policy on it, but that policy is bought into by everyone in the community that believes in it and supports our students. It makes them feel every day that they have somebody they can go to and talk to and be welcomed and supported in a safe manner every day in school. And that's something that really has to be, I think, bought into and, um, communicated on a clear basis from all levels of our schools. That's so our, so our families feel safe and supported.
Can you follow up on this one? Okay. So on the topic of safety, um, how, what do you see as some of the greatest threats to school safety? And how would you address these concerns, their curriculum, school practices and community engagement?
Well, I think we're fortunate in this county. We have some really involved, um, um, during my time as an administrator, state police, uh, assistants. We have great, uh, connections with our, uh, local police and also our DA's office. Helps support us and keep our schools safe with a variety of drills and update information for our, our planning and everything that we do to keep our schools safe. When we toured the schools, um, last week, it was clear that there are good safety protocols in place for each school before you're allowed to enter. And, um, all the, the staff were certainly, um, even though it was the chair of the school committee coming up, there was a, you know, had to buzz in, you had to sign in, you had to do everything that was needed to keep the, the entry to the school safe. That being said, I think the, the biggest challenge and the biggest threat in our schools is, is cell phones. Um, and cyber, um, issues. Uh, about a year and a half ago, my, uh, I T director, myself and two of our principals attended, um, again, it was a Burke twelve P D in August of twenty twenty-three. That was put on by the DA's office and provided some really just, um, eye-opening information about the issues that are faced in our schools. One of the, the key areas that addressed was how some of the educational programs that we use, um, to help educate our students using technology, what's being done with that data? And how we can really evaluate programs more appropriately in our schools so that we're protecting our students' information and data. Obviously this year we had a, uh, a challenge many districts, mine was affected as well by the power school breach. And how we can respond to that and make sure that the information that was compromised can be kept safely and that families can monitor any impact on them. Thankfully, I think most districts or all districts, I believe, don't share some of the key information that could have been damaging that was compromised in that leak. But it, it just shows that the importance of having our technology be safeguarded through clear policies that evaluate educational programs. Because technology is a big piece of our, uh, preparation and education of our students. So we have to make sure that we're using programs that protect our students' data. The other issue with the cellphone is obviously the whole cyber bullying issue. And it's, it's a, it's a very big challenge that we have to continue to have, um, policies that, uh, I've always been a, uh, administrator in elementary school over the last fifteen years. We don't allow cell phones in our schools, never have. And from my standpoint, I would never want the cell phones in the school, because we have plenty of technology in our schools that can be used to educate our children. The cell phones to me are a distraction. They're, they're a, a tool that unfortunately is used for a lot more negativity than the positive they bring. It's important that we have these policies that are modeled by our administrators. One thing I was impressed by when I was walking, we were walking through Wacona, was that Principal Rob made a clear point that they do not use cell phones in the school and he does not carry his in the school to, to model that for, um, all the students. And it's something that they've, uh, worked on, uh, over the last, uh, I believe since the school opened. And I believe it's also, they've had some policies about the, the password being changed on a, a daily basis or a regular basis. And there's a lot of, uh, information I wouldn't want to share, uh, because I'm not sure how much it's shared widely outside the school, that are key initiatives that have been brought down that keep our students safe in the school. There's a lot of technology being used, but it's being used through school technology so that we can monitor it and make sure our kids are being safe in their use of technology. So I think that's a real key, um, area that DA's presentation, I want to go back to that again. It's, it really showed how it's important to evaluate all, all, um, parts of a policy using technology in the schools. And I think it's something that we've worked on. Our I T director in M B S U is very informed. He attends a regular, um, uh, meeting of the state, uh, I T director, so he can learn all the update information. We've engaged in grants to updates our cybersecurity. And it's something that we really have to, um, prioritize going forward, because it's only going to become more challenging if we don't stay on top of it.
Any follow-up on this one?
How should CPR S D invest in more opportunities for student career readiness?
I think as we discussed earlier, this is an important topic. Um, education is, uh, changing and, uh, students are valuing those, uh, real-world experiences as, as a, a important part of their education. The vocational schools are clearly, um, um, reaping the benefits of that, um, change. And I think, uh, as, you know, college, uh, uh, funding becomes a little more challenging for students, we have to make sure that we're preparing our, our, our students at all levels to be successful. So I said, I was very impressed with the programs that I saw at Wacona with the work-study program, with the, uh, virtual school, with the, um, hands-on in the classroom. One thing I noticed on, excuse me, on your district was that you had been involved, I'll take with the portrait of the graduate at one point. I was at a Burke twelve, um, convening a few weeks ago where there was a, uh, a really interesting presentation by students from two other school districts, where they talked about being involved in that program and how it allowed them to, through the work that they did, um, talking with their school administrators and teachers and the, the individuals running the program, to discuss how they can make school more meaningful. I thought there was a comment by a, a student who I've known for a long time, who was an excellent student, who made mention of the fact that when she was getting A's before being in this program, it was just for the sake of getting the good grade. It wasn't because the work was, um, I think she used the word speaking to her, being meaningful to her in a, a way beyond earning that grade. So how do we develop programs that, that, um, can identify that with our students? How can we connect with our families to, to understand what is needed? And how can we make adjustments beyond what we have in place now? It seems like the, the district has gone to a place where they are trying to address it. I know talking with, uh, Principal Osburger at Ness, Nessicus, that he talked about the six class rotation they do for the specialists, which is not. Um, they're meeting some needs outside of the art and, uh, um, does that in different specialist classes? I think there were some other classes that were talking about how to prepare students for skills beyond the classroom. I think that's important that they're starting at the junior high school level with meeting those skills. So they can be continued at the high school level and try to, to prepare students so that, again, we can address that gap of how can we help students get the skills they need to leave school and go to a career if college is not on their plans? And I think that's one of the areas that's real, a real challenge for, for the, uh, for the public schools as opposed to vocational. It's how do we meet those needs for the kids that can't or don't go to a vocational school in our current schools that we have? And I think it's going to involve some more innovation and trying to, um, look at options that, uh, beyond the virtual school and beyond some of the work-studies. And how can we add more of those hands-on programs in our school going forward?
Can you follow up on this one? Steve?
Hello, um, describe the most difficult decision you've made in, in a leadership role. How well did you, or how did you handle it?
I heard you discussing this question last week ago, I was thinking to myself, this is a tough question to answer, because we make tough decisions every, every day as a superintendent, um, as a principal, as a teacher. Uh, and they're difficult because they involve people, um, whether it's a student, whether it's a family, whether it's something in the towns, uh, these decisions are always tough because they involve an individual. I know for myself, um, in one area of, um, having to make some personnel changes over there, my, my time as a principal and as a superintendent, I always try to be empathetic, because no matter what the situation has involved leading up to that point, I think it's important that we acknowledge, um, that individual and try to talk to them about what's best for them, best for the school and how we can move forward in a productive way. But as far as my most difficult, um, decision, uh, I think about the clear example is, uh, during the pandemic for COVID. My districts, uh, and those of you on the search committee already heard this story, but I'm going to tell it again. Back in March, uh, I remember the day, it was March seventh, it was Saturday evening and, uh, twenty twenty, I received a call at home informing me that there was a, there was a case in one of our, a positive case of COVID in one of our towns. And it had some type of connection to our school. It's all the information that we had. So how are we going to react to that? Because we just were starting to get information about COVID, we didn't really know much about it. We knew there was concerns about how it could spread quickly and what we're going to do next. So quickly, um, like the call came from my assistant superintendent, she had talked to the town administrator and we, um, and I quickly divided up some responsibilities and we got a meeting scheduled for Sunday morning in my office at, I believe, ten o'clock. And we started discussing what should we do to keep our students safe? Because it's always has to be our first and most important, um, priority every day is keeping students and staff safe in our buildings. And this presented a new challenge, because it wasn't the traditional school safety. It was how we keep them safe from this illness that we don't know much about. So we did a lot of phone calls, we tried to determine information and because it's a health issue, a healthcare issue, there's not a lot of information that can be shared. Uh, we made some phone calls to the state, we talked to surrounding districts. And the clear indication was that, um, we weren't sure what the impact would be and we weren't sure exactly what the connection of the school was, but that there was a connection. Um, I, I remember talking to, uh, uh, a health official at the state level who said, well, if you decide to close your school, you're going to create hysteria. And I said, I don't see that, I see it being hysteria if I don't, if we open our school and it's not safe. And our job is to keep our school safe. So we made the difficult decision to close the school for the, that week before anybody else closed and to educate our, our students, uh, as best we could on a remote basis, when there wasn't really remote learning at that point, especially not in elementary schools. Um, over the course of next week, we had, uh, we did obviously a thorough cleaning of our school. And then about a week later, schools started to close down and took the rest of that, school year away from being in district. But I, I stand by our decision to do that, because we didn't know what the case was. There was, as it turned out, we learned more information, there was a connection to our school. And it was the right decision to keep our students and our staff and everybody in our community safe, with the information that we had. And as a follow-up to that, in the, um, couple of months that we were trying to do remote learning, being, it became clear that our rural communities with their challenges with connectivity and remote learning that we, uh, remote learning wasn't working for my towns. And two in particular have very poor, at that time, internet connections. So we made the decision as an administrative team to work diligently over the summer and late spring to develop plans to bring our students back to school safely. And again, we were still navigating at that point, um, with more information, but not enough, not what we have now, obviously. And when we came back, we were able to, in August, uh, well, we actually had those ten days where we didn't have to come back and we could plan. We came back in person in all of our schools. And that was a significant achievement for us to do that. And two of our schools, um, Row, which is actually in Franklin County and Savoy, which is in Berkshire County, were the only two schools to go in person for all a hundred and seventy days without interruption throughout that school year. And that was an important, I think, decision that we made, uh, to help our students navigate, not just the education, but also the social, emotional impacts of that, um, time. And I think it's helped us to, um, limit some of the gaps that, uh, that we had in our school. There's still some, and now we're, we're addressing them. But, uh, by having that diligent planning, by prioritizing the safety of our students and our, our staff and by working together to provide a safe educational plan, we came back in person. And one, one more fact I always want to say on that was that I received a call from D C Commissioner Riley in December of that year saying that our districts were, uh, four of the fifteen across the state that were in person for the whole year. And to me, that was an important accomplishment that we were able to do safely. And it did have some pushback, but I think we explained ourselves, we, we made people understand it was, the planning was thorough and we kept our families and our staff and our students safe, um, going forward.
Follow up on that? I have one. So you said you kept, did you keep all the schools open or just the, uh, the Row and, uh, Civil?
No, they were all open. Florida had, um, a week where they had to close, uh, because they had a positive, some positive cases in the classroom. So we decided to take a five-day
What about Clark's?
Remote, Clarksburg was in person the whole time. Going to Clarksburg is that because, uh, the junior high school, we had to do a plan where, um, half of the junior high school came in person in the morning and half came in the afternoon. And they would alternate remote learning during that time. It was technically classified as hybrid, so even though the grades K through five were in person through the whole year. So we did have to make a little bit of an adjustment, but they were all, students were in person for the entire school year for all four of the districts.
Okay, anybody else? Next up is Sarah.
Can you give an example of an organizational change that you've made? What was the rationale and what was the outcome?
Well, I think the best example I can share is, um, the M B S U office. When I first started in July of twenty eighteen, I came to the office and the first day I was myself and my assistant. I'm like, where's everybody? I mean, to me, the summertime, coming from a larger district where the central office is very active, uh, during the summer, preparing and getting ready for the new school year, it just seemed to me like we weren't, um, weren't doing that. When you had your special education department that wasn't, uh, required to work during the summer, when we had, um, we were sharing a business administrator at that time with, uh, with North Adams. And, uh, that was a, the plan that we had for that year. And quickly I realized that as, as hard as that business administrator was working to address the needs of both districts, it wasn't really working for us. So, um, what I started to do was to work with my school committees to try and develop plans so we could have full-time, uh, support and organization, first one, special education and our business administrator, and as well as, um, the sports staff we had in the, in the office. Because we needed to prepare and help our schools to be ready to hit the ground running on day one, as opposed to trying to play catch-up, which we did that first year. And I quickly realized that. So that was a challenge, because you're dealing with financial, um, issues, but you're really have to prioritize what is best. And part of that also goes along with the summer program. So the reason why the summer program wasn't very effective when we first got there was that, again, it wasn't supported or staffed. When that first summer, we had less than forty students going to summer, uh, program. Programs and most of those kids were just getting services, which is important, but we need to have more experiences for our students. So over the course of the next. Two years and then, of course, we also were dealing with a pandemic, we started to develop plans where. We had full time. Staff throughout the district and to me, that's a big step for me because I'm always a proponent in our budgets of putting the money into the schools first. But we did use this plan to. Benefit the schools by having the support with special education, by having a financial plan so we could support our schools. By using that time to have our our district staff work together with the administration in the schools to go after. More funding opportunities and more grants that we could use to support education in our schools. So I think it's an example again of of. Evaluating and determining a need and then making sure that the need addresses the educational quality in our schools. And this is a plan that we're actually looking to possibly expand. Going forward because of the needs that are present in our schools. And also. One thing I discovered was, I mean, small communities like I had and they were not in a regional, so they. I think in a way we're used to floating under the radar with technology, the way it is and the state reporting and. We just went through another special education audit, our third one we've done during my time and it was it was successful. We have to be on top of our compliance and that's a way to do that is to do it during the summer. When there's a little less going on in the schools, obviously, and we can focus on that work to be better prepared. So our schools can start the year in September and be ready to hit the ground running.
Okay, any follow up on that? All right, so that's the end of the 10. Do we have any follow up questions in general for? John?
Not sure which question, but I was interested in the private funding. You spoke about, is that something that the school went out and asked people for? You're just waiting on?
It was more connections. Think we've talked about it a little bit through some of our different parent groups and talked about ways that we could support. Learning in our schools and. Tried to better connect with some individuals. It was it was a private donation, so I wanted to make sure we don't. Reveal them, but it was something that was important that we told them there was a need in our school. Our school was very, as we mentioned earlier. A school that had a high poverty rate of 70, 75%. And we wanted to make sure we got that out that those are the areas where we're willing to support our children effectively. And through some of that communication and connections in the community, we developed some. Partnerships to help us supplement materials in our school. And in that case, it was with some iPads that. Were very effective and they were targeted specifically for the early education classrooms because. That was where we identified the biggest need in the school. So I think it's something that we tried to. Follow through on in a way that got the word out that we had a severe need and how could the community help us?
Yes, you're you're described your your situation as in a school union. This is a school region. Could you possibly? Explain the differences between the two and how that might relate to what you'd be doing here versus what you're doing there?
I'll be honest with you, what you're doing here is what I would like to see more of potentially, or at least look into the option of it with my current schools, just because. Of the need, right? We've been working, or I've been working since last, I think it's been June with the Housick Valley Regional Superintendent. And recently, North Adams has become involved also to try and do a study for seven. Communities in that North Berkshire area with. Four of my towns, Clarksburg, Florida, Monroe and Savoy, along with North Adams, Adams and Cheshire, try and do a study to look at how we can be more efficient in our use of. The education, the buildings, the collaboration. So. Under my current model, there's five independent, separate districts. We function together and do some of the. I would describe them as similar similarities to a regional district where we share employees. But we don't get the benefits of being a regional district, for example, transportation. So you are eligible as a regional district to have your transportation reimbursed on whatever the percentage is for that particular school year. My schools don't and we do share and have tuition agreements between the districts, but there is no reimbursement for that. Few years ago, I was at one of the the online meetings of the MASC where one of the chairs of the school committee. Asked one of the state officials, why can't we get regional? Transportation money and it was explained that you're not a regional district. So those are areas where. My districts are different because we can't sometimes apply for grants that we would be able to earn if we were a regional district. And I've been using this district as I've learned more about it as part of our plans to try to do the study in North Berkshire as a model that we could look at. To try and be more efficient, to collaborate, to look at. I mean, high school was an area that we're really looking at in North Berkshire County because of some of the declining numbers. In enrollment, when schools are graduating 40, 50, 60 students at the high school level. And there's more than one of them doing that. How can you collect, combine and? Combine the resources of both of those organizations so that we could have the strength of both come together and provide even better education. And the reason why my towns are involved in that conversation. That we have tuition agreements with all of those districts that are involved in the conversation. So you're right, there are definitely differences and. I would like to see us have a more. Efficient model in North Berkshire that could in some ways model what you're doing here.
Anybody else? All right, would you like to close up? Give us a closing statement?
Yeah, I just want to say thank you, everybody. This has been an interesting process over the last two months. It's been very thorough. I appreciate. All of Rich's communication. I've had some chances to to meet some of you in different circumstances and I really appreciate the opportunity to learn more about your regional district. As I mentioned. I think my work that I've done over the last seven years and as well as my work as a principal before that really prepares me for. To be a viable candidate for this job. The one thing I it's a very strong. Group of finalists, I know that, but I think the one thing that makes me stand out is the fact that I have been a superintendent for the last seven years that I have. Had to make the decisions and I've made connections across the county and the state and different areas where it could be beneficial moving into this district in this position. I think that or I know that this work is challenging. And one thing I learned when I first took over this position. When I was in that new superintendent induction program with 40 other new superintendents across the state was they told us that the the average. Tenure of a new superintendent is 2.9 years. And then seven years later, and I'm still doing this job and I'm that want to do more of it. I think I've been successful by my my approach to leadership and I think I can bring that approach here. And I think that dedication and commitment to the position is something that is very important during uncertain times. We need we need proven leadership that can. Show that they've made the decisions in the past and can take those experiences to make difficult and challenging decisions going forward that benefit our. Our district and I hope that I can get that opportunity here to be your new superintendent.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff.
Thanks everyone. So we do have a 15 minute break for the next. Thanks, I'll be in touch. Do you have a 15 minute break? So there's the piece and you're ready for round number two. Also, we wanted to discuss this candidate at all. Any questions or comments about? This candidate? Seen none? Concerns? Comments? Seen any here?
It's just a process question.
Yeah, are we? Taking an opportunity to discuss each individual candidate after directly after their interview or are we? Going to be on recess for five minutes until the next?
So we have 15 minutes. We should discuss the candidate and I made a mistake saying I'm going to take a break right now. That's my bad. I was hungry. I was going to head up and get a piece of pizza. So yeah, we should discuss the candidate while it's fresh in our mind, discuss the candidate if there's any concerns, comments, questions. You know, not that I can answer them, but you know, if you have concerns or or you know, comments, share them now. And then we can take a break before the next game. So. Are there any? Comments in favor, against? I mean, it doesn't. You know, it's really open and it is sort of public forum, so just so you know. Yeah. Anybody? Okay, all right. I saw Dave saying go up first, so Dave.
Given the work that I'm doing in the regional agreement, this communication with all the small towns and. The discussion and attending select board meetings and finance committee meetings and starting these discussions earlier in the fall. Is a huge benefit to us. That is that is something that. When you go around to the towns and you and you sit with the select boards, I've met with all seven of them now. This is an area that we do need to work on. So I think this is a very strong candidate. In many regards, but I'm going to start with that one.
Um, I think as he noted, being a superintendent already, he comes with a lot of strengths. Although it is not in the same the same regional district with a full high school and. You know, so I just want to point out like he is a superintendent, but it's a different kind of a different role.
Yeah, yeah, Ellen.
And I he did note that the average superintendent stays in the their district for just over like two and three quarters years. I saw. Some things that had said that he may. Be looking to retire in the not too distant future. That gives me a little pause. Because I don't know if we really want to continue to have the turnover in our super in our leadership in that short period of time. That's just a consideration that I'm having.
Yeah. Can you miss?
Earl? I certainly think that he. Brings a really. Helpful perspective and set of experiences, especially having, you know, five separate. Schools and school committees, which sounds. Just so much fun. But I I think the one area that I especially. Was left a little bit disappointed was just. I don't get the sense that he is very involved or. Well versed in the educational curriculum piece. I didn't I didn't feel that in his answer to. The the fourth question. Or his answer to the to the question around. Vocational schools, so number number eight and just sort of creating more opportunities, I think. Yeah, those those two especially, I would have seen. A little bit. More.
Barbara?
I felt that there were some questions that he didn't answer at all. For example, an organizational change, he talked about the summer program and the office. I was looking for more of a substance for organizational change and I didn't get that. There was another one also. He's the most, oh, I know the one about Jake's question, I think it was. The greatest threats to school safety. Yeah, cyber bullying is a threat, but I was thinking along the lines of other kinds of threats that he didn't even touch upon. So.
Agree. Ellen?
To go along with Charlotte. He didn't really, he really didn't get into the meat of what you would do to invest in opportunities. For a student career readiness, given that we are under a lot of budget constraint, that's a big. Deal like how are you going to move around money to make sure that our high school students are ready to meet? Have to meet the needs of careers and he just doesn't seem because he doesn't deal with high school students. I don't know if. He's going to be ready to hit the ground running efficiently as we move into some very challenging budgeting years and. In terms of and what curriculum we're going to offer for our students.
Else?
Dave again? Yeah. I I did see, I think there was there was something in our packets. Maybe maybe it was a note from survey questions or something about about possibly retiring. I don't know if that's. Confirmed or not. I don't think anyone would really want to. Take on. The challenge of of entering a new district if you're close to retiring when you could just. Phase out where you are. So I'm not sure if that's that's really a concern. Certainly up up for the desk. There's. There's a lot of elementary background currently, just with the district that he's in and getting our students off to a solid start. It's huge. The. Superintendent Union, the union up there doesn't have a high school that is working in directly. I don't think that's, I don't think that. Works against him. There is a middle school in Clarksburg, I believe, is if I understand that correct. Yeah. But you know, having that solid solid hands on with with the elementary schools and and again, they're all individual districts, so they're all working on multiple curriculum. Paths and things. I just, I think it's having having a solid foundation. Is is really key there. And again, just that that steady leadership as as he said at the very end. Talking about these these kind of challenging times that we really need proven leadership. And I think he's really proven himself. In what he's doing up there.
Anybody else? Jake?
Yeah, just a couple of comments. I mean, obviously, I know all the candidates and worked with them, so it's. I I'll try to sort of separate that out, but John has sort of a very unassuming affect. I guess that's the best. I I would describe it as a in the most positive way I can. You know, and he's not as polished in his use of language. As other folks I've worked with in my career and I'm working with. But one of the things that I I took away and I'm reminded is that he does have sort of, I think, strong convictions and he's willing. To initiate on tough things. And an example that he gave in COVID, he gave in the screening committee meeting to interview to, which I thought was a good one to be. As bold as he was when he was getting pushed back from the state not to close to close and then to open when they said, don't open. I thought was was brave and he did that with his team. But even more recently, he he's really been the one initiating this North County conversation around regionalization and it's not something that is easy to tackle. It's complex, it's emotional, there's a lot of resistance and and so I've seen him, even though he has this very unassuming. Personality, I guess I'd describe it that way is. He's got a strong track record. He's, you know, he's not not afraid to lean into things and and to move. And and make decisions when he needs to. So I would just offer that up as just a perspective.
Who else?
All right, let's get. Let's get back here at 10 after, about 13 after. Give us a five minute break.
Everyone's Mike and all.
Hi, everybody. I want to say go around this for the folks in the audience and I'm going to introduce myself. I'm Rich Peter, the chair.
Nice to meet you. All for all.
Hi.
Take it, Ryan.
Charlotte.
David Stewart.
Liz Landsberg.
Todd Emerson.
Latazori.
Sarah Tucker.
Steve Morant.
Kim Wetherow.
Liz Hoaks.
Point out.
Thank you. It seems a little disingenuous to have these introductions, but I'm Mike Knoll. I'm your assistant superintendent. I guess as a quick means of introduction. This process has given me the time to really reflect in question and ultimately reaffirm. That the superintendency is really the path for me. It's my next move and I I know that for sure. I'm also convinced that there's no better place for me to lead than here. And I'm ready to accelerate the improvements that we've started since I've been here. And I'm ready to accelerate the improvements that we've started since I've been here over the past three years and I'm ready to be the next superintendent of Central Berkshire.
Okay, just as a heads up, um, we have, uh, you know, an hour, 10 questions, five minutes per. Mr. Ferrell will be giving you a little wave at four minutes and a cutoff at five. I will ask folks for follow up questions after any of each question and then general follow up at the end of the discussion. Great, okay?
I have one handout that I'm going to reference during one of the questions. Is that okay?
Great. Okay, I'll start it off. What stands out to you about our district's unique assets and challenges? Why do you believe yours still is a good match for our district?
Um, our greatest assets are our people, hands down. Our staff, students and families make Central Berkshire the district I want to lead. We draw great people here and, and we keep them. Our teacher retention rate is 95%. That's 10% higher than the state average and that speaks volumes to who we are and the work we're doing. Our people make up remarkable teams. They're another asset. We work together to give our students the best, best education we can with the resources we have. In some districts, central office leadership is synonymous with isolated decision making, top-down policymaking that aren't supported by the people who actually do the work, but I know how to build support. I've been able to use my skills as a listener, as a natural learner and teacher to start building the strategic teaming that we need here at Central Berkshire to get the work done. We now have an instructional leadership team made of 33 teachers, administrators. They provide real input into the decisions we make around improving our assessments, our curriculum and our instructional practices. And we are improving. Last year we met 64% of our accountability targets. That's more than double the 27% that we made the year before. We are improving. Our seven towns are diverse in thought and in politics, in the jobs people do and what we value. And all of that finds our way into our schools. That diversity is an asset. It was pointed out in our equity audit. We've become a district of choice. 203 students choose us. That's an asset. Families who value education are choosing us and that's only making our community stronger. I'm one of those parents. My wife and I chose Central Berkshire because we knew what to look for in a school district. And we knew there was no better place for our kids to learn. Now others are taking similar stances as some of our assets combined, but we do have challenges. Our ge- our geographic expanse is real. We cover 214 square miles. You can drive from Route 20 and eight in Beckett up to Ocona. It takes us about 30 minutes. Same thing coming from East Covington down Route nine to Craneville. That sets us up for what geographer, geographers call spatial injustice. It means that where you live determines the opportunities you have and the access you have to resources. We're far away from the political and economic centers that make decisions in our state. And because of this, our students don't have the same level of education as their counterparts in the east. Our challenge is also raising the bar in our academic outcomes. I am more than anything a competitor. I don't settle for things to be okay. Historically, our accountability data has been right around the state average. If you average our accountability percentiles for this year, which the state doesn't do, but I did, you get 52. We're right in the middle. Based on how strong our assets are, that's not good enough. I know we can do better. If you've ever seen me coach a hockey game or a baseball game, um, you know that I set high expectations for my, for my players. Central Berkshire is not average. We are exceptional and we need to produce results that show that. I've made my professional goal to fight for the students of Western Massachusetts to get our educational systems on par with those in the other half of the state. And over the past five years, I've served on the Housick Valley School Committee. I've honed my political skills and I've learned the realities of political advocacy. So I have a jumpstart on getting the job done as superintendent. I've used my skills here to build internal support for some fundamental improvements I'll talk about throughout this interview. I know how to listen. I know how to build consensus. I know that relationships matter most in education. I understand that trust is a dynamic thing that's easily broken, but can be strategically reshaped over time. And I'm ready to be Central Berkshire's next superintendent.
Thanks. Any, any follow up on that? CNN, okay, Paul.
Given today's environment and unprecedented uncertainty, how do you maintain financial sustainability while facing the growing demands for services where a community strong, or when a community strongly resists budget increases?
We're facing a, a perfect financial storm right now. Our expenses are increasing faster than revenue is available and funding streams right now are wildly unpredictable. Financial sustainability requires an understanding of our challenges. Most of our towns have limited commercial tax bases. Wages are low. Employment opportunities are limited in Berkshire County and our general population has declined over the past 20 years. All of these factors put the burden on individual taxpayers to shoulder greater costs of financing our schools and they don't have the money to do it. At the same time, our students have growing academic behavioral and social emotional needs and the cost of giving them the services they need is getting greater every day. Consequently, we're required to do more with less. We've been lucky that strong fiscal planning has left us with the necessary reserves so that we didn't have to make the deep staff reductions or lose services to kids that other districts around us are seeing right now. We're lucky for that. But our challenge in the future is going to be continuing to provide that high level of, that high quality education and at the same time maintaining limited reserves that we have. Fiscal sustainability is also about improvements that create efficiency. Every dollar matters. We have to be intentional with every dollar. I've worked with our administrators to identify cost savings opportunities by reimagining schedules, carving out opportunities for additional services without adding costs. That's important. I shy away from addiction sickness. That's the, you know, organizations typically try to improve by adding things without ever taking things away that aren't working. When I pushed to invest in a new assessment system, we also eliminated outdated and underutilized tools. We'll be able to both reduce our expenses and we were able to reduce our expenses and improve the quality of what we had. Doing this at scale across our system has promise. Fiscal sustainability is also about securing state grants and advocating for changes to chapter 70. Now, we know the chapter 70 formula is broken. It, it's, it's not adjusted for inflation for the reality of special ed and transportation costs that, that disproportionately affect our rural schools. When Rep. Representative Lee Davis had office hours in Dalton, I went and I talked to her. I talked to her team about the need to create a more predictable and permanent revenue stream for rural schools. Some say advocacy isn't a realistic strategy, but I disagree and I point to the $1.6 million that we got this year in rural aid because that was non-existent in 2019 and advocacy got us rural aid. We also do need to continue to secure grant funding. I'm not going to talk about that a lot tonight because it's uncertain, but one that I do want to point out is that I'm hopeful that we can become, um, that we can pursue the CPPI grant, which would greatly increase the number of students who get access to preschool in our towns. This grant could help pay for the teachers, the interventionists and the curriculum materials and it could also expand access for our youngest children to get a jump start. And it has potential cost, cost savings in the long run, um, big time. And I, I was part of the work at Housick Valley as a school committee member that landed the CPPI grant and it's been great. But financial stability is also about being resourceful, which we are every day. I have experience in developing shared service agreements. I did that at Housick as well. As a school committee member, um, I helped orchestrate the development of, uh, two agreements, one between Northland Public Schools and Housick for shared athletic director services and one, um, in the shared director of building and grounds. And both of those in dramatically increased services to, um, to our school without increasing costs and it actually reduced it in one case. I think we should be looking for opportunities to collaborate, um, sharing support services with neighboring districts, um, who are also in the same boat looking, um, for more services. And we should explore joining regional purchasing cooperatives. Um, we already do that, um, for custodial supplies, um, but there are other options out there. And we should also maximize the space that we have available as a possible revenue stream outside providers, local preschools, Head Start might even be interested again in moving into some of the spaces we have available, especially at Beckett-Washington. And finally, fiscal sustainability is also about transparency and I'll talk more about this in another question, but I, I have firsthand experience in engaging the community and transparent budgeting process. I was the chair of the finance committee. And in small towns, trust and communication is everything. And, you know, through several budget cycles at Housick, I learned that we have to do a better job of communicating our needs to select boards, to finance committees and really to the voters. Um, and while I know it's getting increasingly more difficult with the right strategies, we can sustain a high quality education here.
Any follow up on that? CNN? Barbara?
What is your experience with strategic planning and how would you approach this work in Central Berkshire? And I know you've done it already.
Yeah, as an administrator, I've authored turnaround plans, school improvement plans, district improvement plans, um, all of which are scaled down versions and connected directly to larger strategic plans. As a doctoral candidate, I worked with a, a local district here in Berkshire County to help determine what factors and perceptions were driving their school choice numbers. We engaged stakeholders through surveying and, and focus groups and eventually developed eight recommendations that were evidence-based, fiscally responsible. And they've since incorporated many of those ideas into their strategic plan. What I've learned is that strategic plans always center on the mission and the vision, right? And, um, which are intended to be, be relevant and visionary and it grounds them in actionable and measurable steps that you can take, right? That's what you're trying to look at, how you can lead to better outcomes for students. And it's also a time when you can question whether or not our current mission is still relevant. Is our vision still aspirational? I think that's when you're strategic planning, you really ask those questions. And Mr. Stewart mentioned last week that the new superintendent of our district would inherit the current plan, right? Which is set to expire in 2028. I think that the three strategic objectives in our plan are important drivers for our district. That we provide equitable learning opportunities for our students, we, we promote student achievement, we provide equitable support systems for the social emotional needs of our students and to expand and strengthen our family and community partnerships. Those are important to any district, especially ours. But I think that the best plans are really dynamic and responsive to current needs. They have to be reevaluated all the time. If, if we're meeting our goals, we owe it to the community to push harder. If we're not, we should all be asking why. And so I guess what I'm saying is the nature of strategic planning to me is really iterative. I'm a fan of improvement cycles. It, it was a large part of my, my education. Like I, um, think that a strategic plan, um, should really follow a PDSA cycle that, you know, we should plan a strategy based on something that's proven to work. We should implement that strategy, collect and analyze the data and see if it worked. And if it doesn't work, it's okay, but you need to go back to the table and find out something better. And I've used these cycles everywhere from analyzing classroom lessons to see if the results we were getting were accurate to, um, or to planning, um, measuring impact of reading interventions on targeted groups of students. So we can use those cycles all around. Um, and what I'm bringing to the table is an expertise in how to design strategic measures that ensure that we're assessing two things, both the processes that we're trying to implement and also the outcomes that we're, we're trying to get to. And those are two different things and very often strategic plans mix those and they don't separate it, but we need to plan that, that, we need to measure that we're actually doing the work and that that work is actually having an outcome. I think there's power in routinely embedding data checks into meetings with our instructional leaders, with our building principals, our professional learning communities that can make a strategic plan come alive. It doesn't have to sit on a shelf. You should be measuring it and using it consistently. But it's important to remember that what you measure is most likely what people will do. I mean, look at MCAS testing and how it's changed instruction. So creating those measures and actually creating our targets, we, we have to make sure that the problems that we're actually addressing are real problems. And what I've found, especially with my work in creating focus groups and gathering input is that this is a great time in the process to gauge every, to engage everyone, to engage stakeholders, to bring people in and build ownership around our district. Because getting everyone at the table to be honest about what needs to be improved, right? How we plan to do it, how we're going to measure it and how we're going to pay for it. That opens the door for fiscal sustainability because it provides everyone with a clear vision for what we're going to do and how much it's going to cost. Because all of these improvements have costs. So in short, any strategic planning has to provide clear goals. They have to be aligned to a relevant mission, aspirational vision. It's a good time to put those in check and it has to measure our progress towards them. And in best practice, you bring the whole community together to do that work.
Any follow up on that? CNN? Charlotte?
How do you ensure high quality instruction and continues to meet the curriculum framework standards in ELA math and science, but also in other disciplines such as social studies?
Anytime I get a chance to quote Aristotle, I will. So Aristotle said that educating the mind without educating the heart is no education at all, right? So if we don't teach English and empathy, math and music, phys ed and physics, we're educating minds without hearts. I, I was a high school history teacher for years and I used to say that history teaches us everything, even the future. We, we need, we need civics in, uh, his, in social studies classes for sure. I was an athletic director. I coached hockey. I coached Little League baseball here in Dalton. I also carve out time every day to play my guitar and I, I say that because my, one of my core beliefs is that a well-rounded education is essential to becoming well-adjusted, successful, healthy human being. You, you need to do it all and we need to provide those opportunities throughout our schools. The focus of my leadership really is improving systems to make sure all students have access to rigorous standards-based instruction. It's, it's what I've done for a while. And one of my mentors was fond of saying that what you get shouldn't depend on who you get, right? What classroom you in shouldn't determine the access you have to high quality education. We need to ensure that all of our classrooms are, are providing the same opportunities for students. So this is deeply important to me and it's what centers my decision-making as an instructional leader. It starts with making sure teachers have the right resources in their classroom. Okay, that's, that's number one. We also need to have a clear framework for instructional expectations and then we have to support it with professional development. You have to have all three things. So first, teachers need to have the tools that they need. And I've led an effort here, um, starting with our youngest learners to get high quality instructional, uh, materials in front of our students. First in ELA and mathematics classrooms, grades K through eight. Our students deserve to have the best materials in front of them and we're currently exploring high quality materials for both middle school science and high school ELA. And, uh, and we have some opportunities to explore free state-approved materials that have been designed for history as well. And also some materials that are linking to the new health and wellness standards. Secondly, we needed to have a framework for instructional expectations. Ours is a work in progress that was informed by research and revised by our instructional leadership team. We call them our hall, hallmarks of, of effective instruction. And they're, they've all been proven to have a positive impact on student achievement. They're the tenants of good teaching and we expect them to happen. We expect that lessons have clear We expect that lessons have clear objectives, that teachers deliver clear, direct instruction, that all students participate in guided practice, and independent work. That teachers are designing purposeful collaborative learning tasks and that they're providing students with timely feedback. Those expectations, together with high-quality curriculum materials, ensures that all students have access to rigorous standards-based education. And that goes for all subjects. Third, we need ongoing aligned professional development. I've led the development here of our instructional leadership team. It's inclusive of all K through 12 content areas and grade levels. No subject is marginalized. Our team meets during the summer and throughout the school year to engage in professional learning that fosters vertical and horizontal alignment, promotes cross-disciplinary planning, and it builds leadership capacity for our teachers. It really pulls people in. We work together to develop our skills in curriculum mapping, analyzing student data, and identifying and responding to instructional gaps. And this work guides our professional development plan for the whole year. So in summary, regardless of the subject, rigorous standards-based instruction is the backbone of a high-quality education, and we have to make that commitment to have the high-quality materials, instructional expectations that are evidence-based, and a support plan to put those in place.
Can you follow up?
Mike, how have you built lines of communication in past roles? How would you gather public feedback, sustain support, and work with district stakeholders and municipal officials?
In every leadership role I've had, I've prioritized two-way communication, and it's a hard thing to get right because people have personal preferences about what's too much communication and what's too little communication. So it's very hard to get the right balance. It was my idea to move the district towards parent square as a way to streamline communication for parents and get our communication practices a little more streamlined to get everything in one place. We wanted to give parents quicker access to the people that are working directly with their students. And so far, the feedback's been positive. I'll say that building lines of communication is essential to building trust, and it starts with being visible, accessible, and responsive. As an assistant superintendent, I've done this work internally with our staff. I think it's because I've been visible in classrooms and I've been responsive to feedback that our staff has largely rallied to support my superintendency. I visit classrooms regularly, I know our students, I keep an open-door policy and talk to people when they want to talk. I make it a point to host and attend community events. I sponsored a handful of family literacy nights throughout the district that have been And they've given me a chance to meet a lot of people. My children also play Dalton football and baseball, and I mentioned that I coach, so I meet and talk to people on the sidelines all the time. And those informal conversations are really important. I attend our athletic events, our concerts, our musicals, we've got one coming up this weekend. In past leadership roles, I've used a combination of newsletters, stakeholder surveys, and community forums. And I think we've started this year, actually, we've touched the surface, and I would like to continue the type of public forum that we had when we were discussing the School Resource Officer. Sometimes people shy away from the topics that are controversial, but I think that gathering public opinion, especially around polarizing topics, is really important. And it's not just a job of the superintendent, but it's part of general civic responsibility. As the Chair of the Finance Committee at HUSIC, I saw that sustaining support involves sharing more than just our revenue and expenses. We had to try to build working relationships with our town administrators, our select boards, and finance committees by engaging them earlier in the budget process. Continuing to provide clear and transparent data and explaining the rationale behind our goals so that everyone knew what we were doing, why we were doing it, and the impact it was having on the community. People want to know what the results of their money is getting them. A growth area for our district is opening the lines of communication with our towns and being clear about the results their investment is returning. We need to be honest about our challenges and clear about our next steps. And I know that our superintendent talks to town administrators and presents to finance committees, and presents to select boards. It's vital to getting our students the resources they need, but sometimes even that's not enough. It's important not to take things personally in this line of work, and we have to remember that our elected officials are also tasked with a near-impossible job of providing public services to the towns. I value education, right? I think they're the most important investment a town can make. But they're also weighing public safety and health, right? Which are two really important dueling priorities. When HUSIC's last budget failed to pass, I was on the ground garnering support. We did this through a series of communications leveraging data-packed, clear information, okay? The committee handed out one-pagers at football games. We orchestrated public service announcements through social media. And we got our budget. And I believe that when voters know the facts, they do support our schools. And Central Berkshire actually has a history of supporting our budgets. So ultimately, my biggest skill set is building trust with the people I work with, with the towns. I believe that I can do externally with our community partners what I've been able to do internally with our staff. When people feel heard, included, and informed, they become part of the work.
How would you ensure that all students, regardless of background, abilities, or circumstances, have access to the resources, opportunities, and safe and welcoming school environments they need to succeed?
I mean, the moral imperative here is that every student should feel safe and supported and successful in school. That's the bottom line. Success should not be an option for some students and not for others. There's a simple answer to this, which is we need a more robust, multi-tiered system of support. But that's super complex. And which is a system that's designed to help all students become academically, behaviorally, and socially-emotionally successful. Forty-nine percent of our students are high-needs, okay? Nineteen percent are students with disabilities. Those numbers are high. Thirty-nine percent are low-income. And the gaps in academic outcomes for those students is unacceptable. Even if our gaps are smaller in some areas in the state as a whole, we cannot excuse it. Suspension rates are the same. We're within a percent of state average, but students with disabilities are suspended at twice the rate of their peers. The gap's a little bit smaller, but it's still present for our low-income students. In ELA, only thirty-five percent of our low-income students and nine percent of our students with disabilities meet or exceed expectations compared to forty-four percent of everyone else. In math, it's a similar story. Thirty-four percent of our low-income students and eight percent of our students with disabilities meet or exceed expectations compared to forty-three percent of everyone. Science is the same story. The assessment data signals that there's a problem, but it doesn't tell us what the problem is. And that's the work that I set out to do. So I've prioritized updating our data collection and our data analysis practices, and I invested in and transformed our universal screeners so that the data we are collecting through benchmark cycles is accurate and usable. We needed to ensure that we know what challenges students are having before we set out to fix them. And we can now pinpoint their skill gaps at the most basic level. So we're no longer saying things like, "The student is a struggling reader," or "The student struggles with math." We can say, "The student is struggling in phoneme proficiency, or fluency, or comprehension, or numeracy, or decomposition." We can target those skills. We know better than ever the nature of our students' deficits and their strengths, and we're actively matching students' interventions in response to those needs. We know that students who struggle decoding need different interventions than students who struggle with comprehension. For a long time, there was a one-size-fits-all mentality for fixing reading, and we know that that doesn't work. The system that we're designing right now and will be implementing in the fall across our elementary schools next year will go a long way to meeting these students' needs and closing our achievement gaps. My work here started with strengthening our Tier One curriculum and instruction, especially in our core academic areas. I also spearheaded the creation of a code of conduct that sets clear, consistent expectations, consequences, and interventions to support our students struggling to meet behavioral expectations. We need to remember that equity is not about equal distribution, but fair distribution based on need, which is why I advocated for targeted resource allocation. This means channeling additional supports to where it's needed. I've pushed for increasing school adjustment counselor positions in some of our schools to help meet students' needs. I've advocated for repositioning and adding interventionists. We've built off our success of our universal screening platform, and by next year, every student in grades K through 10 will be screened in reading and mathematics to help identify their skill gaps. And our administrators are actively building the interventions that we will be using to support them. Another piece of this puzzle that Mr. Liu and I have talked about is offering teachers a chance to hone their inclusive practices to meet the diversities of classrooms, of students in their classrooms more effectively, right? We're not pushing all of our need off into intervention, we're also going to do that in the classroom. We have an upcoming professional development around that, and it has potential to leave our teachers more prepared for supporting their students with wide-ranging disabilities.
Can you follow up on that?
Yeah, just curious if you have any thoughts or ideas on how to improve that data analysis or collection for skills and content beyond just ELA and math?
Well, we also benchmark in science. So we do have, so actually, I misspoke, we do have that data for science. And we do look at, we routinely look at our science data as well to make sure that our students are making progress. We do not have universal screeners, and I actually don't know of any right now that boil down to the skill level in science, but we do know whether or not students are meeting the standards.
Mike, so my question is about safety. What do you see as some of the greatest threats to school safety, and how would you address these through curriculum, school practices, and community engagement?
Answering this in five minutes is hard. It seems like the number of threats that we face every day is growing. I mean, who would have thought measles was coming back and could possibly get into our schools, right? But I think this question is designed really to address the low-probability, high-impact events that we might face, like school shootings. They cause high anxiety for families, and they have potential to devastate a community. So we have to be prepared for them. There's two parts to this answer. One is, I want to explain how we prepare to respond to crises in schools. But the second and bigger part of this question is, how do we stomp out the mental health challenges, the social media addiction, the bullying in our schools to quell the root cause of these events in the first place? First of all, we need to be prepared. We need to invest the time, and we do. That means having clear protocols in place and practicing them. Everyone needs to know their roles and responsibilities in an emergency, and we have to ensure quick and accurate lines of communication. Miscommunication can really hamper responses, and it's rampant with cell phones. So we really need to be quick with our communication and clear for families. We lean on our community partners to do this work. District and school leaders meet monthly with local law enforcement and first responders so that our schools follow the emergency management plan designed by the people who will be responding. Since my time here at Central Berkshire, we've had two tests of our emergency responses. We had an evacuation and relocation and reunification at Craneville after an air handler set the smoke alarms off. When that was done, we had a chance to collectively brainstorm what went right and what didn't, which was a great opportunity for us to make some changes to our response. We had another event at Wacona, which went very smoothly when we feared a gas leak because of a smell which was ultimately unfounded. But we have protocols and practices in place. We plan them, we practice them, we drill them, we reevaluate them, we look at them every year, and we practice them every year multiple times. But the more immediate and deeper threat, and really what I want to focus on here, comes from a few interconnected societal problems. And if we leave them unchecked in our schools, that increases the likelihood of violence. And this is work we can do. First, the first threat is the increase in mental health challenges. We see anxiety, depression, trauma, the feeling of being disconnected. These are very high right now. Students are feeling them across our schools. We have an SCL curriculum, a good one, and we begin each day in all of our elementary schools with a morning meeting that's designed to teach students interpersonal skills and also make them feel connected. That's the goal. Make them feel belong, make them belong. At all levels, elementary through high school, we teach social awareness, conflict resolution, and self-regulation. And this is supported by our school adjustment counselors, our health teachers, our deans who work with our students to combat school-based anxiety, help students overcome grief, substance abuse, emotional dysregulation. All of these things we need to combat in our schools. I, along with Principal Rob and Director Liu, have designed a new student support center for Wacona that's rolling out next year. We're happy about it. It will be a space where licensed staff will offer comprehensive behavioral and social-emotional interventions for our students who need it the most. And through resource reallocation, we were able to do that without increasing the cost of our budget. A second threat that's connected is the impact of cell phones in our schools. I'm really proud of this because we have successfully created phone-free spaces in our schools. That was one of the first things that I spearheaded when I came to Central Berkshire, and it was successful. And if you walk through our schools, and I know some of you have when we did our tours, you can see that students are not on their cell phones, not in our classrooms, not in our hallways, not in our cafeterias. I don't know of any other school system that's done that so quickly and successfully. I'd like to add one more layer of prevention to cell phones. I really think that we need to implement a digital citizenship curriculum. There's some free ones out there that I've been exploring. We didn't want to do that this year because we rolled out a lot of new programming, but we need to teach students how to navigate social media responsibly and understand the consequences of their actions. I just want to say, I know my time just ran up, that bullying is also really important. And I helped design a system, reporting system here that's digitized, and I'll just say that it's becoming trusted by our community, and it works.
Yeah, just to kind of tie us a couple things together, actually. Social-emotional learning, how do you measure that? How do you determine success and if the program is working? I know you're very data-driven, so yeah.
It's interesting because we actually designed a comprehensive survey that, and I'll talk about it a little bit, because it's linked to our Portrait of a Graduate work. And our Portrait of a Graduate competencies are all soft skills that are social-emotional learning skills. And so we do have a baseline that we collected at the beginning, at the end of last year for all of our students, K through 12, to get a baseline for our social-emotional competencies. Yeah.
Okay. Next up?
How should CBRSD invest in more opportunities for student career readiness?
Our number of college Our number of college-bound graduates is on the rise, thanks to Free BCC. But we still have around 20% of our graduates who choose other paths. So we need to ensure that those students are ready for careers when they graduate. And I think we also might be able to attract some students who decide to go vocational, who actually might fit some of Wacona's pathways. And I handed out a handout, just because we do have pathways at Wacona, and I'm going to reference them a little bit. But first, I don't see our district being able to adopt Chapter 74 programming. Our local vocational schools have established programs and state-of-the-art infrastructure, and we can't compete with that. You know, if students want to pursue automotive, or HVAC, or cosmetology, or aviation, they're going to go to vocational schools who are doing that really well. But I do believe that we can become more attractive to and have better outcomes for the students who don't want to go to college. And as a school committee member at HUSIC, I supported the work that they did in tackling the same goal, when we did it over the series of a few years. They leveraged their Portrait of a Graduate work as a visionary foundation, and they then created six pathways of their own, some of which are in the process of being designated as innovation pathways. But together, this has led to retention of more students going from eighth grade to ninth grade at HUSIC. It's really helped quite dramatically, and it has real promise for us in both college and career readiness. So first, we need to make sure that students have the soft skills they need to be competitive in a 21st century workforce. I mean, AI is quickly on the rise. It's prevalent, and businesses are saying and industry that soft skills are more vital than ever. Companies want students who can think critically, right, who can collaborate, who can think for themselves, who can take other people's perspectives and work as a team. And to be clear, those are all the skills that our SEL curriculum teaches, right? So when social-emotional learning is questioned or criticized, I push back and I remind people that they're actually criticizing the skills that make us human, that that's what separates us from AI. And, but we need more than an SEL curriculum. So we need to reinvigorate and build from the work our district started when we developed our Portrait of a Graduate. I saw school committee member, as a school committee member, I saw how the portrait work really set up the foundation upon which they built their pathways. And we may have missed an opportunity here when we decided not to join our other surrounding districts in working with the Bar Foundation and Burke 12. But in the end, we do have a great set of attributes that were created through our community, through a community effort. All of our stakeholders were included, and we can ensure that our students aspire to make them live values in our schools. We know what we want our graduates to be able to do when they leave Central Berkshire. We just now have to do a better job of integrating them into our K-12 experience. And we started off really strong, and I know that we can pick that right back up. And finally, we need to strengthen and market the pathways we already have. That's what's in front of you. I'm not sure if you were aware that we had informal, in-house pathways. And a pathway is just a set of classes. It's a scope and sequence of courses that students can take. And in innovation pathways, where they're different, are, they include specific work-based learning, career immersion, structured career development education, and we would need to pursue those if we wanted to invest in creating innovation pathways. When we approached this work at HUSIC, we decided to start with the pathways we already had in place and build towards DESI designation. We actually used Carver High School as a model. And we basically started it at the middle school, an exploratory program, where students explored their interests early and set them on a pathway that connects them to our high school. We have some of the pieces already in place. We have a DESI-approved college and career readiness advisory platform called NAVYANCE. We have articulation agreements with BCC in our early education and environmental science programs. We have a home repair program and a greenhouse. All of that are active. And we have an internship coordinator, Kathy Grady, who currently works part-time to coordinate our internships and promote community partnerships. And in this year, we have 13 students working with various employers. We could expand her position, and we could get the pieces in place that we need to make our pathways innovation pathways.
Can you follow? Helen?
Recently in the news, there is a student in Connecticut that's suing her school district because she graduated with honors, felt that she was ready for college. The school said, "You're ready for college," and then she got to college, and she can't read or write. So how are we managing our students' special education needs with also ensuring that when they do graduate, they are ready for the real world?
I'll answer this quickly. That's going to take me a little bit of time to answer, but a quick answer to that is, if you look at our, the data on the DESI platform around our students who are going to college and who stay in college, we're at about 94% for a four-year cycle. The last year that we have data for is like 2020, the graduates of 2023. So our students are staying in college. There was just an article about Columbia University that was in the news about kids not reading books, right, and that they're not college-ready because they can't sustain attention. One thing that we do in this district from kindergarten through 12th grade is we have students reading books all the way through. That's our core curriculum. So that's the short answer is that we're getting kids prepared. If you want to talk about that, if we have time at the end, I can answer that more thoroughly for you.
Okay. Next, Kathleen.
I know we're tight on time, but you mentioned earlier in the interview this sort of notion of collaboration, then you raised the portrait. Maybe a missed opportunity. Where do you see opportunities for collaboration beyond joint purchasing? Are you open to that as we move forward as a district? Because we've historically been relatively isolated.
I do, and more teachers have been asking about, like, the Burke 12 Professional Development Day. I see opportunities for, I am who I am because I collaborate with other people. I talk to other people all the time. So the short answer is yes. I can see us, under my leadership, I'm starting to open up a little more and inviting people in and expanding out. You know, expanding our horizons is only a good thing.
Mike, describe the most difficult decision you've made in a leadership role. How did you handle it?
So this was a really hard question, because we make our decisions all day long. I started by looking at back at everything I've had to say no to since I was a principal, because saying no is way harder than saying yes. And, you know, I thought about hirings and firings and their impact on students and on the community and on the individuals. And I thought about budgets that I helped design that reduced staff or services to kids. I thought about adopting curriculum materials that have the potential to shape the worldview of years' worth of students. That's pretty heavy stuff. But I want to talk to you about a decision I made that was deeply personal here. And it was my decision to walk away from being principal at Reed Middle School before the work I had set out to be was done. I didn't take my decision to leave lightly, because I was brought up in a family whose core values were hard work, loyalty, and integrity. I learned young that a person was only as good as their word, and I've made my career on doing what I say I'm going to do, especially when it's hard. I had moved quickly through the ranks at Reed, and I became the lead player in designing the plan that was designed to get this school out of turnaround. At the same time, I was enrolled in my doctoral program, and I was learning about both data-driven improvement science and the human side of leadership, both at the same time. And I learned that my style really was a mix of data-driven improvement and relational and transformational leadership. I was able to motivate people to make dramatic changes quickly by building trust, being authentic, and empowering the people around me. I had managed to rally a skeptical but dedicated group of people to follow me towards what I believed could transform the school, and they trusted that I'd be there with them to the end. And then I left to come here, and that was a really hard decision. At the time, I had a mentor who said, "Mike, Pittsfield needs you more, but students anywhere you go deserve you." And he told me to think about what I value and to think about my family and do what's best for me. And in the end, I chose Central Berkshire where I felt that I could lead with my core values, and that was the bottom line. I was raised to treat others how you would like to be treated. And my decade as a teacher, my time working as a substitute, it's not on my resume, but I worked for four years as a custodian through college at the Pittsfield Housing Authority. And all of those things help me put into perspective when I make a decision. I don't think I'm smarter than anyone because I have letters after my name. I was brought up that intelligence is not measured by a degree on the wall. I treat others as equally human. I use data-driven models to identify problems and measure our improvements, and I was going to talk about that a little bit. And I could talk about how I'm adept at interpreting policy and law to make decisions that are ethical and legal. But I think, for most of you on the committee, I've worked with you enough that you know that about me already. And I wanted to tell you this story because I still think away, I still think about locking away from that job all the time, and I don't want to do that again. And I'm ready to lead here. I want to make a commitment to see the work I've started through to the end. And I know that the work never really ends, but really, I'm just getting started.
Okay. Sarah?
Can you give an example of an organizational change that you've made? What was the rationale, and what was the outcome?
The most important change that I've made here at Central Berkshire was the shift away from our longstanding, beloved, and highly controversial reading curriculum, the Unit of Study. This wasn't just in our classrooms. It was in our culture. It's embedded in it. I mean, people who love Lucy, love Lucy. And in a short amount of time, to the credit of our teachers and our administrators, who are amazing, we've done in less than a year what I was told would take five years to do. When I was hired, the national hysteria around Lucy Cockens was at its height. And to put it simply, for those of you who don't know, the units just aren't aligned with the Science of Reading, which is a body of knowledge that, or research that explains how the brain learns to read. I had learned a lot about Science of Reading through a lot of professional development, and I had a cognitive science thread through my doctorate. So I was really interested in how students learn to read. And I knew when I walked in here that I was going to need to make a change and that I was going to meet resistance, and it was going to be hard. And honestly, one of my mentors, as I entered, said, "You're not going to be able to change the Unit of Study. You're not going to be able to do that in Central Berkshire." But anytime you're making an organizational change, you have to remember that you're changing people's behavior. And if people don't want to change, they won't. I mean, it's that simple. So it takes time to build support, and people need to understand why they're changing. They need to have a voice in the change. You need to ensure that you can pay for the change and sustain it long-term so you don't get halfway through and it falls down. So here's how I did it. First, I made myself visible in all of our schools. I spent a year observing lessons, looking at student work. I talked to our teachers, to our administrators. I met with grade-level teams. I talked to parents. I gathered as much data as I could so that I knew what was going on in our classrooms, and I knew that we actually had to make the change. I put in the time to do that work. And once I was convinced that a change was needed, I designed a series of professional developments that created a sense of urgency and started shifting mindsense. And I did this intentionally. I met with small groups of teachers. I didn't meet with everybody at once. I wanted people to meet me and learn with me, and I wanted to build the relationships as I built the support for our change effort. And I needed the teachers to trust that the change they were making was the right one and that I could lead them to where they needed to go. And we started small. We added a phonemic awareness curriculum first. I said, "Let's see if we can do this." It was called Hegarty. We put it in our K through 2 classrooms. Everybody was doing it. Teachers were engaged. Students were engaged. So I said, "Let's scale this up." We added foundations, and we upped our foundations through third grade. And we did, to measure this, we did really structured walkthroughs for a full year, and we measured the implementation. And as I visited classrooms, I knew that we had set the stage for a bigger change. And in the background, I applied for a grant. I knew we were going to need money, and we secured that grant funding. And at the same time, I was also trying to get Leslie's support because I knew that Leslie, who led Units of Study implementation, was going to need to be with me, and she was. And so I was doing that work while we formed a large curriculum council with a large number of stakeholders who had voiced throughout the whole process. And we listened, we debated, and we chose to adopt two different sets of curriculum materials for K through 5 and 6 through 8. And when we rolled the materials out this September, we were really rolling out a new way of teaching reading to our students. And I knew how hard it was going to be, and I don't think everybody did. I really tried to communicate it, and teachers were overwhelmed. But I listened. We listened, right? I knew that this was going to happen. And we designed and offered after-school planning sessions. We met with teachers who were struggling, and we navigated some of the most stressful months, I think, that our teachers have had in a while. And we got to a point now, though, that our district coach told us that we're so far ahead of the implementation curve that it was time to pull back fidelity checks and move towards teacher decision-making. And we're happy because we're there. And so teachers are now actively making decisions about how to use the materials. We have a long way to go. We're adjusting pacing guides. We're working out the specifics of unit planning and finding ways to incorporate more independent choice reading, but the foundation is set. And we now have a more equitable, evidence-based, knowledge-building curriculum, K through 8. And if I can do that with Units of Study in a district where it was embedded in the culture, I can use my skill set to tackle system-wide changes across the educational landscape.
So you have one thing you could give a farewell. Two times.
Okay. I don't think I need much of a farewell. I mean, I know I want to be the superintendent of your district, of our district. I have a lot of work that has been started here, and like I said in my last response, I really want to see it through. I have the support of our staff and our administrators. We work really, really well together. I have the background in improvement, in the knowledge of improvement science. I know how to use data, and I also know how to work with people. I'm ready.
Thanks, Mike.
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you, everybody.
I have my bag. Okay. There was quite a few follow-up questions during the debate, but comments, concerns?
I really appreciated that he gave us an insight to his thinking. He was so clear, the thought process that he had, and he shared it with us, which was great. The other thing that stands out for me is something that I've always been accused of, and I can talk forever about education because it's my passion, and I feel the same way about him. He could speak without a time limit forever because he was so passionate about all aspects of education, and I applaud him for that.
Helen?
I, we've worked with Mike. We've known Mike for three years now. I kind of felt he came in a little hot when he started at the beginning of his introduction, where I don't know if he realized what he said, but it sort of sounded like, "I'm ready to take the role of superintendent." So it was almost like, "If you don't hire me, I'm going to start looking elsewhere." So, but I don't think he meant to do that, and I don't want to take it that way. But, so I don't want to come in here and have that affect my decision-making, like, "We're going to lose a really great person if we don't..." Like, we're going to lose a really great person if we don't accept him as, or give, hire him as superintendent. I also sort of feel like, is the role of superintendent, where hit, like, right now, he is doing so much transformation in our curriculum, do that, is that the role of the superintendent? Or does, is he best suited to be assistant superintendent while somebody else manages the business of the district? You know what I mean? No, I, I don't want, but I don't want to shortchange him because he's, I mean, working with him on curriculum, he's done so much here and uses data in such a good way that we've really come leaps and bounds after COVID.
Let me just piggyback on what Ellen said. I didn't get that at all from her about the either/or, if you don't hire me.
Yeah.
I didn't feel that. I felt he was just selling himself because this was what his passion is. And not to do that, not to say that, would, would have been a disservice to himself. Just, he really wants this.
No, I get it. I totally understand that. It was just like, whoa, like.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't get the overpowering part that you're, I think you're describing.
Anybody else? Liz?
Well, I have to say that I, I really appreciated that he came in with exact answers. Really, I feel like every question that we asked him, he had exact examples. He had answers to each one. I didn't feel like anything was really missed at all.
Do you pass? Oh, wait. Okay, Liz.
Just one thing about the question nine, the most difficult decision. I was impressed that he gave us a real one. That was like, you know, oh, when I had to fire someone, but to say, hey, I left before I finished. You know, that, that's pretty honest because that might be something that we're concerned about with a superintendent, them leaving before, you know, too quickly. Being honest, I was impressed.
Anybody else? Okay.
Yeah, it's sort of, I, I want to kind of pick up on a couple of things here. Sort of what, what Ellen was saying and what Liz was saying. I know there was some 22 months at Reed or something, so that's, that's kind of short as a super, as a principle. Mike is certainly very knowledgeable. He's very smart. And, and, and as Ellen was saying, is, I think what we have to think about is superintendent. It's hard. Mike's going to accomplish great things in his life. He is going to go far in the path of education, whether it's public policy or, or anything. Right now, what I think we need to think about is, is what does our district need? And the work that is started is superintendent position the best place to continue curriculum development. But I, I see the superintendent role as, as very administrative and very, not as curriculum, hands-on curriculum-based. I, I did think, I appreciate his honesty about leaving Reed early. And, and, and so I do appreciate that honesty. If, there is some quickness to, to the path that he's on here. And, and sort of, and I'm, I'm going to just say the opposite of, of what Liz had said. And that his answers are, again, very smart guy, and they were very speech-written format, which is sort of less organic to me. Obviously, you know, Mike and John were both here when we came up with our questions. It's not really a, not against him, but but again, the, the format, so.
Anybody else?
Well, I'm, I'm really impressed by his data-driven self. I mean, that's really important to know the facts about what you're operating on. It would seem to me, in terms of his success as a superintendent, would be finding someone to basically continue his job that he was doing as assistant superintendent. And I don't know if that's a big unknown, but that's what would have to happen. Because I agree, I think superintendencies is much bigger than just curriculum development, which is really important. But it would seem, you know, you have to, someone, he would have to be a big delegator when that came, if that situation arose.
Any else? Charlotte?
Yeah, I think he is really good at being able to identify, one, what he wants to measure in collecting that data. And as someone who also loves data, I can really appreciate that. He's also very good at communicating what that data means, which is really helpful, I think, especially when he goes to try and garner support for, you know, different initiatives. I also, I, I don't necessarily think it's a bad thing. Even if he wants to stay involved in curriculum as a superintendent, I think sometimes keeping your toe in the water of different things can be helpful and maintain some consistency and uniformity amongst the, the district. And I do think that he is in himself a very good balance of the data-driven and the, the interpersonal skills. My, my one caveat to that is that I do think that sometimes he, when he's driving an initiative, is very focused on that data. And there are certain things, especially in education, that are not measurable quantitatively. And sometimes I think that can be a little bit overlooked with his particular perspective.
I want to say Jake, one more comment from Jake, and then we got a break because we got five minutes.
Oh, sorry, yeah. No, I just, I really liked a lot of what he said tonight, to be honest with you. And I'm such a smart, energetic guy. I just want to call out a couple of things. One is his school committee experience, we shouldn't overlook. I think it's given him a lot of background around just, you know, what it takes to run a district. The counter to that is what Dave said, is he really does have very limited in-charge leadership experience, less than two years. Doesn't mean everyone has to make that jump at some point. I'm not saying he can't make it. But I just want to call that out. You know, again, probably, he said a lot of things that, you know, I wrote down as quotes. But the one that I, that really resonated with me was that we're not an average district, even though we've performed kind of at an average level. And it's kind of, it's been my worry about our district for a number of years is that I feel like we're always right there at the state average, and that we can do much better than that. And it was good for him to be, I think, to sort of call that out as something that he aspired to do better than. That, to me, was good. And I really did appreciate, to your point, that he raised Reed because that, that is, that was a question certainly in my mind. So anyways, I know we got to get on to the next thing. We're going to have more discussion later, but.
All right, quick five-minute break. If you can hit the restroom, we're going to grab, come eat. Thank you. This is Matt Bishop. Good to see you again, Matt.
Good to see you. Thank you.
Okay, and the group introduced themselves. Some you've seen, some you haven't.
Barbara Reese.
Jake Everly. Good to see you, Matt.
Charlie Crane.
David Stewart.
Dave.
Elizabeth.
Adam Emerson.
Hi, Tom.
Lynn Lattes.
Sarah Tucker.
Sarah.
Steve.
Mothera.
Liz Ochs.
Hi, Liz.
Fred Bueno.
Hi, Greg.
Hi, Beth. How are you?
Need to make a motion to.
Yeah, we have to, before we get started, I apologize.
No worries.
There's something? I need to get a motion to extend the meeting. Can I get a second?
Second.
On favor? Any opposed? The motion carries for the meeting. Forgot about that. Thank you, Mr. Perella, for reminding. Okay, if you'd like to start with an opening statement, go ahead. And you have 50 minutes, five, you know, we're giving you five minutes per answer. Paul will keep you in line, but you know when it goes. If you go over, we'll end up cutting short at the end. That's how it goes. So if you want to open up, and then we'll start answering questions.
Sure, thank you. Well, good evening, everyone. It's a pleasure to be here. I, when this opportunity came up, I wasn't actually looking to try to be a superintendent right now until this opportunity presented itself. I, I'm a teacher. I'm a coach. I'm, you know, an administrator for almost 28 years in the city of Pittsfield. And I'm very, very happy there. But when this opportunity came, I said, I, I felt like it was meant to be. I grew up here. I went to Craneville. I went to Nescus. I went to Wakona. Not this Nescus or those, that Wakona or that Craneville. Kind of put it in how old I am, but that's fine. And that was reinforced to me, you know, on the visit when I had Wednesday, last Wednesday. And walking through your schools, you know, walking through Beckett-Washington, I've never been in, it was just fantastic. And I realized this community is, is really important to me, and this is an opportunity I really wanted to pursue. So I, I come to you sort of with, with a lot of experience, sort of trying to come back home. So I'm looking forward to this conversation around the next hour.
Okay, thanks. So I'll start us off. What stands out to you about our district's unique assets and challenges? And why do you believe your skillset is a good match for our district?
Yeah, so a lot of those assets really were reinforced Wednesday during the visit and in the data I looked at and, and, you know, in preparation for, for these interviews. But the first thing is, I'm really appreciative of the regional diversity you have. I mean, you know, seven towns, different communities coming together to try to, to, to be something bigger. The pride and the sense of community in CB RSD is something that was tangible the moment I stepped when I was here, but also now, the moment I stepped back in and interacted with the staff, the students, and, and the administrators. Like I said, I mentioned, I got to go to Beckett-Washington. I've never been there. And I walked out, you know, Mary Kay, if, if there was a school store, what about a T-shirt? Right? Like, it was just, you could feel the pride in that building. You know, Kittredge to Principal Marshall. I know, it was just, it was so exciting for me to be there and see what goes on in those buildings that, you know, I, I really, that's something I'm looking for in, in a district. Also, the high-quality education you provide. That, that is something, you know, the, you get your accountability, but you also have the professionals and the students who, who reinforce that. And again, in my conversations with students and staff, you could tell how much they care and put students first. So the high-quality education is part of your mission, right? That, that's, that's the, the thing you're striving for. And I could see in the, in a visit how that mission was sort of woven and centered throughout. So thank you for that. I think the challenges that you have, you know, and, and again, this, this is something that I, I tread cautiously with because I, I'm not in the district currently. So I have an outside fresh perspective on, on what I'm seeing. So I don't want to make assumptions, but when I looked at your data and on a visit and watched a bunch of school committees way more than probably I want to admit. But the solid challenges I'm hearing from you and from people on the visit are certainly resources, right? So resources and budgeting, that seems to be the topic of conversation. You know, when we were at Craneville, I was, I was so surprised to hear that not only is Craneville the biggest school in this district, but it's also the biggest elementary school in the county. And coming from Pittsfield, that was like, oh, whoa, wait a minute. And I started to think about it, and, and you can see the shifts. So the, the principal, Principal Sawyer was really concerned about resources, right? And how do we, they're full. So how do we, how do, how do they figure that out? So I mean, I was hearing a lot of challenges around resources. I'm hearing that in, in school committee. And when you're, when you're, when your budget's tight, you, you have to make sure that you still have the flexibility from the unknown, but you have to provide that high-quality education that you, that you search for. I think another challenge that I've heard spoken about is regionalization. I know, you know, you have seven communities that you're trying to bring together to be something bigger. And I know part of the job of a superintendent is a coalition builder. And I, I think, switching into the asset piece, I think that's one of the things I do well. I think I'm a team builder and a coalition builder. I've done that in many of my roles throughout, throughout my career, including my current one, where I was put, I accepted this role, and it was an undefined role. And it was new. It's never been in the district. The superintendent had a vision for sort of two superintendents working very closely with each other. And my role was largely, this, Jenny Stokes's role was the assistant superintendent of accountability. Her, her role was really narrow. And I was kind of the everything else person. And the best thing we ever, the best thing we ever did was share an office together. So over the course of the year, we've broken down silos. We've worked together. And now if you walk in there, it's a hub. Our office is a hub. We have the social-emotional director in there. We have the HR director in there. We've built a team in which, in a building in which there were many, many, many silos. So I feel like that's something I can do, and it's a really important skill in Central Berkshire.
Can you follow up with that? Okay, that's Paul.
Given today's environment and unprecedented uncertainty, how would you maintain financial sustainability while facing growing demands for student services where, where a community strongly persists budget increases?
It's an easy one. No, I'm just kidding. So I, I think the, one of the other main functions of a superintendent is to set and carry out that vision. Work with the school committee to set the vision and carry that out. And I think one of the most obvious examples of a vision is the budget. Right? The budget, you know, I've had 12 years of interacting with district budget setting in the district budget setting process, and it's changed probably 12 times. We've done it differently and tweaked things and, and had improvements and feedback as we've gone along. But I've learned a lot. And one of the things I've learned from the different superintendents I worked with on, on central budget, or central office budget or school budgets, is a budget, and Jake McCann always used to say this, so I'm going to give him credit. But he ingrained this in my head, that a budget is a statement of values. And I've said that, I think, in my first interview. I think I said that in, in the, you know, talk with the community. But it's a statement of values. And, you know, you have this, this sort of three tiers. It's what you have to do. It's what you morally and ethically should do and what you want to do, right? And those are kind of the three ways to look at that. And that all goes into sort of figuring out how this budget process might work. So in that question, in that case, I think there's a couple of ways I would approach that in, in the scenario. So the first and most important is to make sure we get input, right, from the community. I think, well, actually, right now, where I'm, I should be, is I, I should be in a budget workshop at Pittsfield. So thank you for the timing. Appreciate it. Getting superintendent cursed. But I think one of the things we've done is we worked this year particularly to increase, to gather community input on our budget. So we, we brought the, the school committee in. We did presentations with them. We got their input. We talked about challenges we're facing. Certainly, we gathered, gathered school council input from, from our, our schools. And then we sent a video out that asked parents to take a look. Here's our challenges, and what do you think? And we had feedback for that to go. So I think asking for input to help guide our decisions would be important. The other thing is resource analysis. So one of the best continual trainings I've received in Pittsfield is through a gentleman named Nate Levinson through the District Management Group. He's from Harvard. He's brilliant. He did a lot of work with us on smarter school spending and scheduling, right? So we've, we've done some talk about resources. So Nate has really helped hone our eye on what makes sense, right? And what we have to really do is when we have competing resources, and, and something he always said that stuck with me, right, is a budget, as well as scheduling, is a series of trade-offs. Right? And that's why it's so important to sort of highlight that vision and see what you have and, and use that to guide your, your choices. And then you can present them and say, if we do this, we might not be able to do this. But one of the key pieces that he taught us was to look at what you're spending your money on with a critical eye, particularly around the services you're providing kids. And he would always say, what works for what kids at what cost? Right? And that stuck with me. What works for what kids at what cost? And that really helps us take a look at things. So for instance, right now, we have a, a reading intervention in grade one, Ignite. I'm done. Do you all do Ignite? So Ignite is, is a partnership right now with the 1-8 Foundation. And basically what it is, is it takes first graders who, well, last year, we did kind of everybody, but this year, we, we were more targeted. So it, it takes students who aren't reading up to grade level and gives them 15 minutes with a one-on-one tutor remotely. And so that's a very expensive intervention, but 1-8 has been helping with us, but we're getting ready to start to talk about. But we're getting ready to start to talk about, do we own that? So one of the things we look at is what's the data say on that? And that program, I can tell you, it transcends race, student disabilities, socioeconomic status, everybody's showing improvement on that. So that's something we're going to really want to look at. Finally, communication, real quick, is I've had the fortune of going through two superintendent preparation programs, one at Boston College and the other with MAVA, Massachusetts Association of Vocational Administrators. They really, they're obviously mostly regional schools. So a lot of the work we did in that year was looking at regionalization and regional budgets. And John Jones, who ran it, ingrained two things into my head. Build relationships with the towns and no surprises. And, and I think in this, this time of uncertainty, right? You saw how it was Springfield yesterday. I mean, they just lost 47 million. You have to have those relationships and you have to have those open lines of communication. That's something I'd be willing to do. And then finally, just advocate, advocate for, advocate for the resources because, you know, that's something we have to continually do, particularly around local and rural aid. That's something I've been willing to do. I actually have a meeting with Senator Mark tomorrow about nursing crisis we're having in Pittsfield. And one of the first things I would do is if I was lucky enough to be here is reach out to Senator Mark and Senator Davis, or excuse me, Representative Davis and talk about, you know, how can we, we push this rural aid? How can I support that?
Any follow up? I haven't seen any.
That was a tough one. That was a little, that was a lot there.
Okay, what is your experience with strategic planning? And how would you approach this work in Central Berkshire?
I think one of my strengths is strategic planning. When I was looking at the documents in Central Berkshire, I was, I really want to give a shout out to you all for the coherence of your strategic plan, your district improvement plan that flows into your school improvement plans. Sometimes you don't see that coherence. And so that was really nice to see that all of those drive each other. And I was fortunate enough to be a part of the Pittsfield Public Schools Strategic Plan Initiative a few, a few years ago, in which we started with, you know, the end in mind. Where do we want students to be in five years? What do we want them to look like in this age of AI and technology? And so then I participated in workshops to build the strategic plans of which we said in five years, we want our students to do this, and then we worked backwards there. So that was really, really helpful. Also, I was part, at the district level, of a grant we had a few years back, well, before COVID now, called the SISEP Grant. It was SISEP. It was about implementation science. So they came in and trained a number of us in implementation science, so it's strategic planning. And another fancy word, right? That's what we do. We change the names of things. It's all strategic planning. And in that work, we learned how to evaluate things we were proposing to see if they were reasonable. So for example, we, we used that earlier this year. There was a PRISM grant that was being offered to multiple districts. And we were a district in Pittsfield that was, that was highlighted that this was might be good for. So PRISM was about early literacy. And who doesn't love early literacy, right? All right. So what we typically do is say, let's go for it. Let's do it. But we pumped the brakes and we applied sort of what we, what we learned in that strategic planning work. There's a tool called the Hexagon Tool. You can look it up. It's fantastic. And you can sort of apply that to the concepts, to what you're trying to do. And it particularly talked about sustainability, right? So that helps you look at the, what you're proposing to do from different areas. So sustainability was, was one way. And we realized that the grant was fantastic for us. But then after the third year, it kind of fell off the cliff. And, and we were going to be building so much capacity and be changing our systems and looking into early literacy in a way that in three years, all of a sudden, if we didn't have any more funding and we couldn't afford it on our local, it was all going to fall apart. So we decided begrudgingly to not to apply that, not to go for that grant. And that's where something like Ignite in the first example, right? You start to weigh these, these decisions of, okay, we got some literacy things. This one's really proven. Do we want to invest here or do we want to invest there?
Any follow up on that?
Can I add one thing?
Oh, what were they?
So the question was, how do you, how would I bring that to Central Berkshire? I want to make sure you answer that part too. And I, and I really do want to highlight your strategic plan that you, that you all drafted. I think it's a solid plan. I think it's a good plan. And your three strategic objectives in there. I feel like I've had experience in the objectives you all wrote and sort of the measurements in those. I've had experience at varying levels of implementing those, those changes or objectives. So I feel like one of the first things I would do if I was lucky enough to have this opportunity was I would look at that strategic plan and get a sense of where you all were, right? And then see where we needed to go and, you know, go from there.
Any follow up on that?
I'm done this time, I promise.
Your turn. Okay, next up, Cheryl.
How do you ensure high quality instruction and learning that continues to meet the curriculum framework standards in ELA math and science, but also in other disciplines such as social studies or health?
Social studies, a little, little close to my heart. I was a social studies teacher for 13 years. So that was, I once received a layoff back in the day. And it was called non-essential personnel, right? Still sticks with me. So we're, it's all good. It's all good, but it's, everything's important. So that was a really good question. I think this is a timely question, given what's going on at the state level with MCAS, right? And competency determination. I think the state obviously proposed some regulations that they're going to, Dussie is going to look at by, I think, the end of May. But they're really focused on mastery and completion, right? And those are two very different things. So your question about, you know, how do you ensure this is happening is timely and appropriate? I think you do it in two ways, right? And I think the experience I've had, in the teams I've had, the two best approaches I've had is you build capacity at the building level with principals and teachers. And then the second one is, is you look at implementing district and school-based systems. Right? So you build capacity with the people and then you look at the systems you have to monitor and evaluate and give feedback. What's your feedback loop? For example, build the district capacity, building capacity at the building level, excuse me. Superintendent Stokes and I this year have really worked hard to embed professional learning for our administrators, our principals, our assistant principals of teaching and learning. We meet for three hours, the administrators meet three hours weekly in, in Pittsfield. And in the absence of somebody to be able to take over that professional development, it turned very operational. We always have tons of stuff to talk about, trust me. But Superintendent Stokes and I said, you know what? We really want to carve out 90 minutes of that time and we call it our learning together time. And what we've done in that time is we've focused on building capacity at the, at the building level for high quality instructional materials implementation. We've identified common practices around common planning time. We see that as a lever and we did a, we're doing a study around high, leading for high expertise teaching. And in that book, it says, and it's true, if you want to see the soul of a school, look at common planning time. Right? So we have visited common planning times. We've given feedback on common planning times. We've done professional development around it. We just did a two PD series, just the last two Wednesdays on getting people back together. They did, the leaders did a protocol where they looked at each other's common plan and gave feedback. So we've raised the bar for what common plan looks like. And now we're seeing it, like we're going into buildings and we're going to PD and we're seeing that the principals bring it to teachers and we're seeing the teachers tell other teachers. And so that's the kind of change I think you can affect. And when you have really high quality common planning time, that curriculum materials you know is going to get implemented properly, right, or skillfully. What we noticed is that in, in our work around common plan, that our teachers were inadvertently lowering the grade level standard, right? They were, they were making decisions in the HQIM to unintentionally go to a standard lower. Not everybody, but we saw it enough where it became a theme. So in our common plan work, in the work, we also build our instructional leadership teams. We've identified that as something that we really want to push on and our leaders now look for it, right? And things, things have drastically improved in a year on that. The systems that we talked about, implementing systems. One of the things we've also done is we reorganized our district learning walks. I think you call them instructional rounds. I think one of the things I've appreciated about my new role is every Monday, we do a learning walk. And so we rotate through all schools. So I've been into every school multiple times at this point in teachers' classrooms evaluating instruction. And that system we designed, we've retweaked time and time again to focus on grade level standards and that, and that curriculum instruction. So I think you have to build that capacity for all departments and teachers so they implement it. And then I think you have to also build those systems. Your curriculum maps are on, online. I took a look at them. I think they're very good. I think there's, with the new curriculum, and I know you're piloting new things in science. I know you have, I know you have two new elementary curriculums being implemented simultaneously, which I think is a great, a real, I want to commend the teachers for taking that risk because that's a lot of work. Not much else can happen when you do that. So that's fantastic. Kudos to the teachers for taking that on. That's no small feat in elementary, particularly when it's math and English. But I think you can, you know, build the capacity in those leaders to make sure that what they're expecting in all subjects is happening.
Any follow up on that question? Okay, Dave.
Yeah, probably built lines of communication in your past roles. And how would you gather public feedback, sustain support and work with district stakeholders and municipal officials in your work?
So this is a really good one. So I think, you know, apart from setting the vision and apart from the, the job of the superintendent is to be a chief storyteller, right? And that's kind of like my forte, as my parents. But one of the things I think a stupid superintendent can do, when you talk about them being the storyteller for the district, it's communication, right? They have to get the message out in a way to different stakeholders, different constituencies that explains what's going on in, in the district. Probably the best example that I've recently done is our, I don't know if you've seen, but Pittsfield is going through middle school restructuring. And so we're, we're taking a look at our current six through eight. We have challenges there. So we decided to explore that. So we spent the better part of the year, which I was a part of, looking at how do we do this differently? What can we do programmatically? What can we do structurally? And I think the, the value in how that was run, and I want to give the superintendent a lot of credit for this, was it involved all the stakeholders, right? So we were there, we were part of it. And what we learned and saw was you took parents, you took teachers, you took administrators. You had everybody around the table rolling up their sleeves who wanted to be part of this. I mean, we had over 30 people there at different points. And the way it was designed was that that committee was going to make the recommendation, was going to do the research, make the recommendation and then present it to school committee. It wasn't on the superintendent. He was part of it. I was part of it. We were all, we all had our roles. But that committee as a group was going to make that recommendation. And to watch the, the committee and the parents that night offer this up to the school committee was pretty special. It was a great, I, it's hard to talk in front of school committees and be on camera enough, but to see parents come up and do that because they believed in this was fantastic. So we gathered a lot of input in communication that way. I've spent the better part of six years trying to communicate and address the biases around career and technical education, vocational CTE. So I've been on the radio. I've been on TV, you know, and we've done videos. We've done listening sessions. We've, we've done it all. And one of the things that I felt like was, has been my main mission is to be an ambassador for the tech, the, the high quality and the rigor of career and technical education. And that, that is a college-bound pathway. It's not just for kids that want to do something with their hands. So one of the things, one of the ways I've done it is just use all your mediums that possible, whether it's, it's Facebook or I think you guys have an Instagram account, CB RSD Instagram account. But I think using social media, utilizing all the resource. I've been on Bill Sturgeon's morning drive more times on like the, like the count. It's, it's a blast every time we're there and we have great conversations. And that gets out, our message gets out and it's just keep repeating the same message over and over every way you can. And that, it's starting to translate. Working with local officials and, you know, in Pittsfield, we do it all the time. Latest case for me was we had complaints from parents about traffic at Teconic. Imagine that. Valentine Road's a pretty busy place. People are pulling off this way, that. You know, for about 15 minutes, it can get pretty crazy. So superintendent, myself, Public Works, PPD, Pittsfield Police Department, the mayor, all got together and we had a meeting where, where we talked about, how can we solve this without putting rotaries or speed tables in, which we wouldn't do. But, and we came up with a solution in which we sort of deployed sort of messaging, calls to the community and then increased sort of presence. And it deterred it and it's worked. It's been better. It's been better. And then just the, the best way of working with community and organizations is the career and technical education model of advisory groups. We have 14 programs at Teconic. Hopefully soon to be a 15th. We're looking to add environmental science. Every one of those programs has a board of industry professionals that come in and, and sit on that group and provide expertise and guidance for, for the classroom and the curriculum. Twice a year, we convene everybody. We have dinner. It's fantastic. We, we talk about the state of CTE education at Teconic. And then they break off and they, they sort of talk about how they can help, what they see as industry trends to make sure our kids are getting the best and absolute most current education they can.
How would you ensure that all students, regardless of background, abilities or circumstances, have access to the resources, opportunities and safe and welcoming school environments they need to succeed?
Thank you. So one of the, one of the focus of my dissertation was creating a sense of belonging at the district level. How do district leaders create a sense of belonging? We called, I called it an ecology of belonging, right? One of the, so in my dissertation team, we identified a new equity framework. One of the wheels in that, in that, the gears in that system was looking at equity of opportunity, which is what this question is sort of addressing. How do we make sure all of our students have equal, equity to all of the opportunities we provide? Here's the short and simple answer. You have to look for it. You have to look for it. You got to try to see what's happening. You have to ask about it. And you have to know what's going on. So let me give you an example. When I first went to Teconic, I noticed our math scores, they weren't where we wanted to be. So one of the things I did was a quick audit of who had opportunity to higher level math. Because one of the, one of the root causes we determined was students weren't seeing enough of the material before they took the test. Why weren't they seeing some of the material? They weren't, they didn't have access to the courses that we're getting them there. So what, so who's, who are we talking about? So I did a quick equity audit. What I found is some of our most historically marginalized students were being placed in the lowest level classes, which weren't getting the rigorous standards that other students were getting. In addition to that, so I said, well, how did that happen? And then we looked at the registration process. And what we found was it was a very closed process. And what I mean by that was, is that students didn't have a lot of input, nor did families. And we didn't do a good enough job of communicating what courses were there, what options were there and what students would be able to, what taking each one meant. So we had a majority of our most marginalized students, lower socioeconomic, socioeconomic students, students with disabilities, taking the level we called standard at the time. And in the new mass core model, standard level courses did not count towards college admission, Massachusetts State College admission. So what we found is unintentionally, we were putting kids in courses and we're going to help them either get into college or do well on the test. So we got rid of them right then and there. At the, you know, we, we got rid of them. We changed it. And now that work is continuing. I've sort of worked with our district to start to build a vision for math in Pittsfield Public Schools K through 12. What's our mission, vision for math? We're working with a consultant who's kind of bringing us through that process. And then we're going to take that vision and apply it to our scope and sequence next year, right? Particularly around eighth grade algebra. We have some, some interesting decisions there. But I think to answer your question is that's how you do it. But we wouldn't have started all of that had we not looked and asked that question, what's going on? And I think that's, it's an oversimplified sort of explanation, but you have to look for it. And if you, if you're focused on equity of opportunity, you're going to find spots that you, you can make, there's opportunities for improvement. The safe and the safe learning environment, I'm going to kind of tie into the next one if that's all right. It's kind of too parcellated.
Okay, any, any follow up to that so far? Okay, next question Jake.
Go on, safety, Matt. You already know the question. What do you see the greatest threats to school safety and how will you address these through curriculum, school practices, and community engagement?
Yeah, I think I've had a lot of really good experiences in Pittsfield. And one of the things that Pittsfield brings, and I'm actually grateful for, is the incredible challenges that happen on a daily basis. So school safety, I we face incredible challenges in an urban setting. And you sort of have your external and your internal, right? And then we'll kind of break it into those two things. So obviously the external is a lot of things you can't control. I mean, this is our, this is our intruders, this is our social media hoaxes and threats that, you know, I'm sure you've seen in the paper, we haven't been immune to. My time and my experiences in this area has taught me it's not if, it's when. Right? So you have to be prepared. And one of the things we do really well in Pittsfield is we, we prepare and we practice. I've worked with law enforcement. I've worked with the fire department. I've worked and I've done tabletop community exercises around safety. You know, okay, this happened. What are you going to do? And we play it all out, right? But it's, it's a deliberate response to making sure you're ready to go. We practice in schools. We, we, I just actually, two weeks ago, we just did a reunification drill, right? So if there was ever a reason we had to leave the building, that's called the relocation. So we practice that. You know, we go to our sites. And then if we couldn't go back in the building, we go to a reunification site where parents start to come and pick up students. So we practiced that at Taconic, you know, and we did a joint exercise with BCC. You know, like I said, Pittsfield, and we had parents come check in just to see how it all worked out. So again, you cannot be prepared enough in this day and age for school safety. We've had the, the training and the implementation of all these safety protocols. It's top priority. If, if you're not, if you don't, if kids don't feel safe in school, they're not going to learn. Period. And then that's, that's scientific. That's anecdotal. We just know that. Then there's the internal, right? And that goes back to that safe school environment in the last question. I think we have to really work to make our schools safe environments because there's a lot of conflict in schools. I don't know if you know that. You put a lot of teenagers or young kids together in schools, there's a lot of conflict. So we have to be skilled about how we can navigate that. And again, the, the social media is probably the biggest driver of all this. But we need a strong social emotional learning curriculum in our schools. I'm glad to see that that was a focus in your strategic plan because that you cannot underestimate the importance of helping students be able to, to regulate and have those skills. Part of that, too, has been adding new restorative interventions. I, I think in the budget, I believe it was what Wocona is, is adding a position to sort of have a center like that. So I think we have a, you know, in Pittsfield, we implemented what's called Rise and Reset. Reset is a place that we staff that if kid needs just 15 minutes or so to regroup, think about what they did and come back. And then Rise is sort of our longer day long intervention program that's restorative. So I think we've done a good job of adding those in. We added them. And I think now, a few years later, we, the community are starting to understand what they all are. And we're starting to break down the myth that only two things happen to you. You get punished or you get away with it, right? That's, that's not how it goes. There's, there's a real big in between that, that we tried to do with those those, those rooms thing. I think part of what we need to do is leverage our, our curriculum in other areas like physical education. The new frameworks just came out and believe it or not, they have a lot around social emotional learning and digital citizenship. I think, so back to the question earlier about, you know, how do you ensure it's all happening? That's, that can be a key component of making schools safe. And so you, you'll look for that. And then again, you have to ask, you have to look for it. We survey our kids, we do focus groups with our kids, and then those are practices that I think any level work. We just, just culminating with two high school based student summit experiences in which the students led student discourse around challenges they saw in their school. And teachers and adults were observers. And that was fantastic. It was, it was sort of born from our work with Portrait of a Graduate and the Bar Foundation. But we adapted it for, for our needs. We learned a lot.
Any follow up on that? Great, Todd.
Should CB RSD invest more opportunities for student career readiness?
So I'm, I'm going to surprise you. I'm not going to talk about CTE in this one. I'll talk about it later, but I'm not going to talk about it right now. Obviously, you know that I think career and technical education I talked about in my last interview. I think it's, it's a really powerful tool. Both my kids do it. One just graduated from horticulture, one is in the midst of it now. And what I've seen it do for them and again, is, is nothing short of phenomenal. I want that experience for everybody. All right. So I lied. I did talk about CT, sorry. But I'm going to talk about a low cost, if no cost, maybe solution to help where I see an opportunity here. In my visits, when I was walking around, I saw a lot of really good things, but I, I did not see, or I did not feel the work you're doing with Portrait of a Graduate. And there's a lot of reasons for that. It's not, it's not a negative at all, because like I said, there's a lot going on. You're doing two curriculums. There's a lot. There's a million things going on. But one of the things I think if you want to start to think about career and college readiness or career paths, Portrait of a Graduate is the thing that's going to unify K through 12. And those are looking at these competencies of what do we want our kids to be like when they graduate? And we start early with that and start talking about it. And then in sixth grade, we pick up what's called MYCAP. And I don't know if you've heard of that, but the state requires that every sixth through 12th grader have a MYCAP portfolio. So it's my career and academic plan, right? And so when I was at Taconic, we actually became one of the state leaders in this right before the pandemic. Then we got derailed. But six through 12, you're supposed, all, all students are supposed to have a career and academic plan in which they start to do exploration. Right? So they start to go, this is what I think I want to do. This is what it would look like. There's lots of tools and lots of ways to do it. But just building that time in, it's not, doesn't cost anything. Right? And that's a way to start getting students thinking about their lives after high school. And that obviously builds each year. It's not the same activities. You know, you're not writing a resume for six years, right? You're, you're thinking about, you're looking at clusters of careers. You're looking at this. So I think it's a low cost, easy way to, to build that in. And then in high school, depending on what your, your students are saying and depending on what the families want, then you can start to branch into a lot of different pathways. Innovative pathways, you know, through the One Eight Bar Foundation, right? Like those, those are programs you can get funding for. And it's, it's like clusters of electives, you know, you bring them together, you get the funding to train the teachers, you set up the rooms, and then you're good. You know, Pittsfield High just did that with engineering. Right? So as we're transforming to fully vocational, we also wanted to make pathways at Pittsfield High School. We didn't want it to be less than. And that's the way we did it there. Then you can also explore dual enrollment, early college. I just was part of a team that submitted two early college applications in partnership with BCC for Taconic and Pittsfield High School. And then really exploring that work based learning and internship programs that you have. So I think that's a way, like forget about the gold standard of CTE for a minute, but that's a way to do things with existing resources you have by just sort of changing the focus a little bit. And, and really digging into that MYCAP and POG, you know, that's the thing that threads everything together. And what that does, and actually the school counselors are part of this, right? Because I'm not sure if they're implementing the mass model yet. But, but the school counselors should be pushing into classrooms. The, the new model for school counselors isn't come down to my office and, you know, we'll talk about college and we'll figure it out. It's, they should be getting into classrooms and, and doing some of this career work as well. So that's where you can, that's where this can live. So you don't have to bring on a new teacher. You don't have to, you don't have to, you can do it with what you have and create that focus. And then see where you go and then decide how you want to, how you want to sort of capitalize that in, in high school. And by doing so, what I've seen is when we start to do this, I've seen kids reengage with school because now there's a relevance and a purpose to it. That's what kids want. They want to be, they want school to be relevant and purposeful. And I think, you know, that's, this does that.
Any follow up? Okay, Ellen.
Hi, Matt. Describe the most difficult decision you've made in a leadership role and how did you handle it?
So of all the questions, this is the one I struggle with the most. It's like trying to pick your favorite kid, right? Like had a lot of difficult decisions and they're all difficult for different reasons. So I, I really struggled with this one. Probably because my best examples in this case would be around personnel or students that I can't really talk about. That, that I didn't, you know, for, for various reasons and working in a, in a large urban district, there is no shortage of difficult decisions. Working in education, in the classroom, you make hundreds of decisions a day. Administrators make hundreds of, like, so they're all difficult. So yeah, I, you know, I was coming back through my mind and I'm like, oh, wow. Oh, yeah, that happened. Oh, yeah, that happened. Right? You know, it was, it was so it was hard. So I kind of started to just try to think about the types of decisions there. And I'm just going to talk about a couple. I know it's kind of cheating. Yes, for one, but I'm going to talk about a couple. And again, like I said, the personnel student ones were, were really tough. And I, I don't want to talk about them because they're identifiable in some cases, so. But, you know, things like giving difficult feedback to principals that I've done. You know, bringing the CTE teachers back from COVID early. That was tough for a lot of reasons. Having to tell kids sometimes they can't graduate, right? That, these, these are things that we do. Well, not that one, but these are the kinds of decisions we do regularly. You know, and, and some of the worst ones, hardest ones for me were, you know, I've lost three friends and colleagues. And you have to stand in front of the, the community and say, I need to post their jobs. You know, and, and when do you do that? And it's really hard. But you bring it back to the kids, right? We need school to move forward. We, you know, and, and so I think I think there's a lot there. The other two categories, so, so those are like the emotionally morally difficult types of decisions, right? But the other two, I think they're sort of like policy resource, difficult decisions and public facing ones. One, we can talk about real quick was the one of the first things that happened to me when I, when I took this job was we had to get a cell phone policy on the books right away. And we had battled with it, you know, over the course of the years, we tried things and we were all set to about to, to go into yonders. And we, we're in a position where we knew we weren't going to be able to sustain yonder pouches. We heard from our community, they didn't want my yonder pouches. It was going to be a fight. Those things were going to be, we were going to have a lot of trouble with them. So I had to quickly gather some, some consensus, this all in about two or three weeks, gather some consensus, look at what other schools are doing. And we did this sort of, we, we made this sort of hodgepodge policy based a little bit on Lowell, a little bit on, you know, some other urbans. And then I presented it to the school committee and you can go back and watch and they didn't love it. In fact, they, a couple, two or three of them said, we don't think this is going to work at all. But we stuck with it and we've cut the referrals down by thousands. And teachers feel better about it. Kids feel better about it. You know, things are happening. So like, that was a tough decision in the sense that we had to do something quickly, not as much buy in as I wanted. And it didn't get a lot of, it didn't get a lot of support initially because a lot of people just wanted them gone, right? But our community wasn't going to do that. Some communities are in different spots with that, like, and, and, but, but our families were saying, you're not taking my kid's cell phone. You know, and, and, you know, all the questions you heard, emergencies and all, all that. So, so we found a compromise. But probably my biggest, this is going to sound weird, but my, the one I lost the most sleep over in the past year was last year's Taconic graduation. So we've made a decision to keep graduation at Taconic, Pittsfield High goes to Tangland. We've always explored, you know, it's been at Taconic for years. And then with the new building, the, the gym can hold it, but we'd have to limit, we'd have to significantly limit tickets. And so what we had to do is we had to, I'm going to wrap up. We had to sort of figure out a way. So we do it outside. So we created a new system, did it outside. Well, that's all great until it rains. And so last year, you won't remember, but it was a monsoon. And I had spoken to kids, I'd spoken to families. The most important thing to them was I want as many people there as possible. So it was outside and I just kept communicating to families, hold, 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 we're planning on, you know, we're going to be inside. Hold, but we're going to look for outside and the Facebook world lost their mind. And they were criticizing me, let's go, you got to do better. This is ridiculous. My, you know, Aunt Suzie needs to see my kid graduate. Like it was just, it was, it was really, it was an emotional time. It's the thing you go for, right? And, and people were being told they might not be able to go. And so you had to sort of just make a decision and stick with it. I was like a meteorologist for the day and we ended up literally when the first graduate walked out, it stopped raining. And that was the plan. We did it outside. And so we got everybody in. So it all worked out, but there was a time for two days that I was getting phone calls, emails, comments, very, very negative. And you just have to have that thick skin and know that you're, you're going to do this for the right reason.
Hey, Beau. Okay, Sarah.
Can you give an example of an organizational change that you've made? What was the rationale and what was the outcome?
I am going to talk about CTE. This one. I think one of the things I'm the most proud about in my time at Pittsfield was taking Taconic High School and turn, and, and helping transform and build a fully vocational school. We're in the process of that transition. There's two more years before it's fully, fully vocational. But if you've had, spent any time in Pittsfield, I think you would understand that the cultures of Pittsfield High and Taconic, they're very strong. People are very proud of them. And we, we transformed those cultures. Even by changing Taconic, we changed Pittsfield High School. And as we grew at Taconic, it became apparent that we needed this to happen because we were saying no to kids who wanted vocational because the school was full. We just had too many kids in it. But we, our programs weren't full. And so we looked at the data, we looked at the trends and we said, it's time. If we want to grow programs, if we want to grow enrollment. And so we started, my, my first year, we had 60 kids in CTE education. This year, we're going to be knocking on 700. Right? And so that took a lot of work. It was political. It was a cultural shift. It was, there was regulatory implications. There was policy implications. Consequences. We had, you know, we basically destroyed districting for the secondary level. Like we, we, it was the side of town was Pittsfield, the side of town was Taconic, that's gone. Right? So like the organizational shift, it changed and reverberated throughout the entire city. And it was, and we did listening sessions, again, radio, you know, we, we did everything. And it was overwhelmingly supportive. It was overwhelming support. We got very little pushback. People understood the need. Now there's been a lot of education since. You know, we had to talk about it amongst our faculty and we went into this mode of, you know, what are we building, right? Like I remember for like two years after, we kept, our tagline was, what are we building here? And that's what like sort of drove us at the school level. And we, we communicated that and, and we made the shift. And I think that is something that no matter what happens with me or where I go or what I do, that's something I can look back at my time in Pittsfield and say, I really did something. I was part of a team that really did something really important for that city.
Any follow up on that? All right. Any general follow up questions from anybody? Seen any?
Not the third one. You're not going to get a lot of questions. Like the person doesn't want to ask the question at the end of a meeting. Now we're good. Don't be that guy. But though, so just to to wrap up, thank you, Rich. I'm really excited about this opportunity and I and I know that this opportunity in education, this is gonna be tough and challenging in the coming years. This is not, nothing in education is easy right now, nor will it be. And I think whoever steps into this role is gonna face numerous challenges, numerous pressures and a lot of uncertainty. I think in your last, not the last one, but two school committees ago, I you were talking about, you know, the superintendent search and thing, and you used the word unknown, I think I counted it like 10 or 11 times. And and so like, I think you you need someone in this role who's has a proven record in dealing with unknown and difficult situations and who has sort of had some longevity in tough environments. And I and I that's I feel like that's what I can offer. In addition to that fresh perspective, like this is my home, but I can bring in an outside perspective because, you know, I've I've been away for a bit. And so I think, you know, I I'm ready to commit if I get this opportunity. This is I'm at a time in my life where, like I said, I have one kid that's graduated and others knocking on the door, driving me crazy, but he's almost out. Love him, right? You're not supposed to say which kid you love more. But, you know, I'm but I'm ready to to commit. I have that that opportunity and, you know, I'm at a point in my career where I have about a decade left to make a difference and I just really want to do it where I started.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone. Thank you. Okay, same process. Have a comment?
Barbara. He's been in this position for a year now, right? Interim deputy superintendent for one year. Prior to that, he was at Taconic. I just want to. A little less than New Year, a little less than New Year, thank you.
Okay. Any any other? Hopefully not last. Twenty eight years in administration. I mean, that's a that's a good record. It's a it's a long time, lot of experience. You know, and he's well aware of the challenges that are coming at us. I mean, he knows, he knows what we're looking at. Just just in in all levels. Certainly ready and certainly has the administrative experience to do that. I I I really liked what he was talking about. About career readiness, opportunities for career readiness, lot of low cost, no cost And and I, you know, we all love low cost, no cost solutions. So.
Just quickly, not 28 years in administration, 28 years in education.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you.
And I just want to say, I think we have, we really do have three excellent candidates. We have a it's a good problem that we have tonight. But I just, I don't know, I didn't quite, I don't think he fleshed out his answer very well for the greatest threats to school safety. And from a guy that came from both PHS and Taconic and then sitting over the entire district, there's lots of other threats that we don't face that he could have talked about in how to prepare us based off of his experience in Pittsfield that he just didn't flesh out very a whole lot. That was just my my take.
He seems to know something about curriculum, which is very good. I have to say, I'd like somebody who has a sense of humor. And whoever comes to this job is gonna need a sense of humor, that is for sure.
For sure. Liz.
Um, I do have to say that I do appreciate that he was very personable, energetic, sense of humor. That's not me. Put that uh, give that a positive or negative. However, one of the things that I do think is important is that a lot of the examples that he brought up are things like not not to compare him to other candidates right now, but one of the things that a lot of things that he brought up are things that Mike is already moving forward on. I think that's important to know that he has these very nice ideas, but we're already doing them. And that was under the assistance of someone else.
Else?
Yeah, I just say that Matt is, you know, as obviously as you all could tell, is incredible personality. Just he's I always talk of describing as sort of that comfortable jacket that you always put on now. Just just a great, great person. And he's really come a long way. I thought one of his strongest answers was, I mean, he said a lot of great things. I think there were some answers where he tried to cover too much territory that he just focused in. But he also, in some ways, gave very simplified answers that said, hey, there's just two things you just focus on. There's one thing that I would focus on. So it's, I mean, that's kind of a skill of a leader, but I like what he said in the end, which is the ability to sort of face the unknowns. And he's been in roles where it, you know, there's been some really, really, you know, challenging moments. And he has navigated and the ability to to show up the next day when some of those things are, you know, it's front page, top of fold, is challenging as administrator. And I think he's he's navigated that and I think he's got his he's got his his battle scars as a result. And the result is certainly demonstrated, you could sit in a role where that comes at you.
Yeah, I would agree. I think he has a lot of experience. And the fact that he does still show up with like such a sense of humor is pretty impressive. You know, I I happen to be under him when we, you know, lost one of those colleagues. And, yeah, he certainly handles himself very well in a storm. I think I also really appreciated his response to Liz's question about sort of asking, you know, what's going on? Where, you know, what does this data say? And if, you know, you sort of have to dig and ask more questions. And so, you know, I'm not sure that he's quite as data driven as some of our other candidates, but I I did like the fact that we sort of balanced, you know, some data in there with also looking at how to increase equity, et cetera.
Anybody else? Okay, that kind of wraps up the individual one. Can we take a real short five minute break, bio break and come back and we'll debate the three of them?
Okay. We, I think we agree we have a tough decision. I'd I'd like to hear from everybody on their thoughts on, you know, parents one, two and three and, you know, kind of comparing them, maybe get comments on comparing them. I don't know, you know, I'll take a show, you know, you know, who wants to go first or, you know, just to talk about it. Anybody have any comments about ranking the three? Anybody? Against, you know? Yeah. I mean, I'll just, you know, I'd like to, I'd like to hear everybody comment on maybe, you know, give me a positive and a negative of each person, just so we can just, you know, just let's let's just hear it, go around the table. Paul, go ahead.
I've I've got a comparison between the three.
All right.
That's all right to share.
Yeah, please.
I was thinking about
I might get the conversation.
the general responses to each of their, how how they each generally responded to the questions. And for me, it kind of came off where John had some good answers, but some of them were really, I don't know if the questions were really answered in depth. Whereas Mike had some phenomenal answers, but it definitely felt a little more scripted. And Matt's answers were like in the middle, but more natural.
Okay, I think the first candidate for me, not a viable candidate, but his answer, he didn't answer questions that I was anxious to hear his response to, and he didn't answer the questions to me. Do I have to give a positive? Let's see. I can't. Okay. Mike, I think he's, he gave a very powerful opening, I thought. His answers were complete, thorough. He knows our district, he's got the support of all the people in our district. I mean, the people who responded were very, very positive in their feedback. He's a known entity, there's no learning curve that's going to come. He knows our district, he can come in day one and do his job. Yes, he is brilliant in curriculum and instruction, but that doesn't mean he's not brilliant in other things. We haven't seen that because he hasn't been superintendent. But he is bright, capable and engaging. Okay. Matt, I thought was, as Paul said, kind of in the middle. He he was good, he's got a lot of experience at Taconic for sure, limited experience as a superintendent, just, you know, for a very short time, he's been in interim. And I did some of the I checked his references, I was the person there, and there was one comment that was a little uncomfortable for me and I didn't like that. Do I care?
No names. Not names.
Not names.
But sure the comment, but not the name?
And make you make sure it's not decipherable.
Okay. Well, someone said that he had difficulty with tough conversations. And he he's growing into it, but he displayed difficulty with that. And I think as a superintendent, tough conversations are constant if you're doing your job right. So that bothered me a little bit. Yeah, oh, there was one other thing like he called Mary Kay, Mary Kay, and he called, where is he? Yeah, he called him Principal Marshall. And just, you know, a little technical difficulty there for me, he has a woman. That's it.
He did also just decide not refer to Principal Sawyer as Principal Sawyer.
Okay, you're right. But Mary Kay.
To charge again right now?
You know, plus or minus on candidate or, you know, your general appeal for the, just I'd like to hear from everybody. Know it's coming, folks who have spoken.
Kate's gonna be speaking. Can I move my seat?
She's gotta be over here.
Yeah, so I'm I get this one thing I just would hammer on is there's only one person that we we saw interviewed tonight who's who has been a superintendent, is John. The other two assistant superintendents is not a superintendent. So it doesn't mean they can't be, I just want to differentiate that. So John's plus, obviously, is experience. He's got seven years in the role, worked in rural districts or small town stuff. And he's really got an unblemished record. There's there's no, there's no baggage there, you know? On the negative side, you know, I thought that there could have been more sort of energy and sort of passion behind the answers, for sure. But I just think that that's the personality that he, that's his personality. I I really liked a lot about what I heard from Mike today. He does know the district, he's he is absolutely a competitor, had competed with him. And he's he's tenacious. But also he's toured a lot, he's, you know, really, he's a good guy. I think he's got limited, as I said earlier, lead role experience. I don't know that he's been battle tested in even in a situation like Matt described, which sounds silly to people around graduation, but that is a big deal. Into sort of whether that is, you have to kind of go through, that's those are the battle scars. But he does know the district, Mike. We've gotten some really positive feedback, the staff, which I guess is a plus and a minus, you know? And then Matt, just, you know, Matt's got a really great diversity of experience. I think his connections to the community are super strong. I think that was great. He had a really good answer there. Yeah, I I what a problem to have tonight, to be honest with you. And I could absolutely live with any of the three. I will certainly, when asked, tell you, I think I would choose as number one, but we'll there.
Yeah, I would I would agree with the assessment there that it's a very tricky decision to make. I think John has some really valuable experience, especially for this district, in managing, you know, multiple school districts, you know, most of which are really all of which are are rural. I, you know, as I said before, I I wasn't particularly happy with his responses around curriculum. And I I just get the sense that both his sort of ability to communicate and also just his general passion for the the process of education itself and like what it's really about on the classroom level, I just didn't feel that from him. And as a teacher myself, I that's just, that's kind of a a no go for me. But I think Mike is obviously well known to to all of us. I think he does exceptional work with the things that, you know, he's in charge of. He he is really intensively involved on a lot of curriculum. And I do appreciate his ability to communicate really easily about information, you know, break down data and and use that to make decisions, et cetera. I think, if anything, I was a little bit disappointed just because I don't love scripted responses so much. And I did feel like he was, you know, I mean, I think he's very capable of going off the cuff and yeah, I I think it just would have been been nice to sort of see that that side of him a little bit more. Matt, I think, made up for that, right? That was a strength for him, he's very able to sort of, you know, speak off the cuff and he does have that sense of humor, which I think is really helpful. He is a really good consensus builder. And I think he has, although he doesn't have the superintendency experience, I think he has a greater diversity of experience in Pittsfield Public Schools. I mean, I'll remind you that one high school there is, you know, basically half the size of our district in terms of the population of students. So it's a little bit of a different, you know, you're comparing apples and oranges sometimes there. I think, again, I he seems capable of, you know, looking at the data. I do still value Mike's approach on curriculum and and decision making more so than than Matt's perspective.
I like John a lot. I I find him very easy to relate to. I I'm particularly drawn, given the work I'm doing with regional agreement, his work and ability to work with several different towns, small towns, and and really that public communication piece. That's that's really huge. And, you know, as Matt said, it's, you know, superintendent's, you know, the storyteller of the district. So so that piece is really huge for me. He is, as Jake said, a a sitting superintendent, he is the only one that that is actually in the role now. He knows how to do that role. He knows how to craft budgets. One of the there was in our packet, there is there was some, maybe it was reference or something about even working with a district or a town that that has more funding, he's very conservative with budgets. And that, I I think is going to be crucial. And that, I, I think is going to be crucial for the, for the next several years. Mike, we know Mike, Mike knows us. There is, he's very smart with the data, very smart with the curriculum, it's something that he's been working on very hard. He's done a really good job of that. I haven't seen, again, the public communication piece, I haven't seen that from Mike. You know, I know, I know he's around in buildings and he's developed systems or put in this parent square stuff. I don't really see him out at select board meetings and, and stuff. It, it's probably, has a lot to do with the role that he's in now. I mean, he's not the chief storyteller of the district. Very smart guy, sometimes, or, I don't know if it says about him or me, but I have trouble following all that data and information, and if you're not in education, it doesn't, it's, it's hard to get that story across sometimes. It's hard for me to understand Mike sometimes because he's so smart. Maybe I'm not, but it, it just, it's hard, it doesn't translate into public communication for people that are not in education. And so that's hard, a little bit. Matt, again, very personable guy, really like his approach to it. And as I said earlier, the, you know, this, this alternative pathways, innovation pathways and whatnot, he has a lot of experience with that, he stood up a whole program, as he said, went from sixty to seven hundred students. He's been in in administration and, and leadership for a long time. Seems like he can handle the, the hard, the hard decisions that need to be made. He did say, he did talk about having difficult conversations with principals, and it's something that he does. Cell phone policy and needing to happen quickly. And he didn't have much support when I, I don't see him as, as backing down or being afraid to make hard choices, and, and that's really important. And, and I just think right now, experience matters. That is something that's really important right now.
I think looking at the, the three of them as a whole, I do agree with some of the sentiment that people have said about, we kind of had someone who was a little more reserved with their answers, someone who was very thorough with their answers, and then someone who was kind of down the middle of that, and I, I wouldn't hold that against any one of those three, I think they're just different ways of presenting the same kind of information you need to get across. But that said, me personally, Liz Lansbury, not, not school committee member, I don't like the jokey-type stuff, that doesn't, that type of personality feels a little dismissive of the importance of what we're talking about. But that said, I still think he sounds like a wonderful guy for Matt. However, specifically, when it comes to his experience, he, he has, you know, a, a wide range of experience in a really difficult environment, as well as a long time in that difficult environment of Pittsfield Public Schools. I do think that he would be a very good representative of our district, going to the towns, I think he would make those connections very easily. And he would be able to tell the stories that we would, not the stories, he would be able to tell the reality with a nice flair that would help make those trust connections that we're really trying to develop in our community. When it comes to Mike, I think that he is very much has a plan and came forward with those ready to go. And I appreciate that kind of preparation. And I, I don't want to take away from the fact, even though it wasn't as visible in our interview process, we know that Mike has spoken off the cuff about about topics that we address on a regular basis, and he, I feel that he can communicate that very well. Even with his data-heavy style. Though I do understand that Mike does not have as much experience with being in a leadership role. And then when it comes to John, I do think that is very important, that he has that leadership role in a rural district, which is something that is unique to where we are compared to, compared to Matt's experience. Especially when it comes to budgeting, especially when it comes to making those connections. You know, coming from one of the little towns, it's hard to get in and really make that connection if you're not already familiar with how to get those in ways. I do feel that John didn't answer as many questions with information to back it up. Though he does seem like he has done quite a few quite a few initiatives that have moved his district forward. This, it's, I'm not positive about this, someone can correct me if I'm wrong, but I did see one point where he did put forward an idea, but I know, I'm almost positive that that is an old incorrect term for it, so specifically, I'm thinking Mohawk Trail Sustainability. I believe that is now renamed, and it's been renamed for several years, and if that's the case, then, am I mixing up with something else then?
Mohawk Trail, is that what you're asking?
Yeah.
You're asking Mohawk Trail?
Mohawk Trail Sustainability opposed to, what was it, a Woodlands Partnership?
I don't know, I think-
No.
Are I mixing two different things with the same exact name? So if that's the case, then I'm mixing up two things with the same exact name. Perfect then. Okay, so my mistake, please strike that bullet point from my opinion on this. Yeah, so, I think that they, all three have their positives, but all three have their drawbacks too.
He didn't leave any words for me, really. David, there's no chance. I will say that I think John is definitely qualified specifically because of his experiences in his role. I was not very impressed with how he answered his questions, in fact, I don't think he really answered most of them correctly, in my opinion. As far as Mike is concerned, it's, it's really good to have that comfort factor and that familiarity and the continuity. My fear is that we would lose an asset that we have in a role right now because he's really good at what he does, and I'm not saying he wouldn't be good as a superintendent, I just wouldn't want to lose what he does now. And Matt, I think, is well-rounded and probably a balance between John and, and Mike, so that's where I stand.
I'm gonna reiterate that, yeah, I think John, he has experience, good experience with rural, in a rural setting. But I don't think all of his experience as a superintendent really matches up very well with our district, even though we're both rural. Like, just from a curriculum standpoint, he's dealing with five different schools, five different, or four different elementary schools, four different curriculum, where we are trying very hard to integrate our curriculum in, from a K through twelve perspective. With Mike, I think he's really, really personable, and he's got a lot of experience with the data, and he has really helped the district pinpoint what each kid, where the gaps are with each kid, and driven some initiatives to really help our kids catch up and, and meet their learning gaps. But I did not really like how scripted he came off, I know he's better than that. And then with Matt, I really appreciated his very easy-going personality, his easy nature, he just seemed some, like a very, he was very natural and that soft-spoken ability, I think really will go a long way in the public forums in getting consensus. But I think that for somebody who has as much experience in both of our urban-setting high schools, and even with his less-than-one-year experience as a superintendent, some of his answers could have been a little more fleshed out. Should have been a little more fleshed out.
I mean, I agree with what everyone said, I think all three candidates are strong and have a lot of great attributes to bring to the table. John in particular, I was not impressed with the safety issue when he, that question in particular, like cell phones are the biggest threat, like that completely lost me, I think that's very much out of touch with the way Central Berkshire is going, we're getting to be bigger, we're getting to have more problems, and I, I just, that really threw me. I mean, with Mike, obviously, I, I like the scripted answers, I thought it showed that he prepared and was ready to go, and he handed the handout. I also, for, you know, really appreciate how he's able to kind of break things down when he is answering questions off the cuff. I'm not an educator, and he certainly, you know, being on the curriculum subcommittee, he breaks it down very, very layperson for me, and it makes it, you know, I think that that's a huge attribute to, to bring to the table. I also think that with Matt, I liked how he talked about the pathways, I think he's done a lot of great work at Deconic. I mean, but I also think, like, bringing up the cellphone policy and what Pittsfield has done with that to use as a, you know, I think that's a big fail for Pittsfield. And I, I think that we're stronger than that, and, and I, I wish he had brought up some other topics.
Steve?
Well, yeah. To repeat a lot of stuff, obviously, John does have the, you know, working with five towns, that whole experience, I think, is, is significant, and it would be very helpful for a district like ours. And maybe it's his subdued personality, but of the three, his, having a passion for education, he did not, I didn't get a passion like I got from Mike and Matt, I mean, that's so, and for Mike, obviously, there's passion, he, he knows his stuff. I, I'm not sure you can be too data-driven, but there's also a human side of everything besides the data. And I think he's obviously great at what he does. I'm not a hundred percent sure that translates into good superintendency skills, which is, which is a different kettle of fish than director of curriculum and superintendent, whatever, there's other responsibilities are. I, I like Matt a lot, I think, I think his answers were good, I think he had, in a different way, he had the same passion towards education that Mike did, which I think is really significant for a superintendent. I think if he's weathered the storm at Pittsfield for all these years, that, that says a lot about a person. You know, I, I, I think, on the negative side, I, I think, I, I, you know, I kind of like his sense of humor, I, I like this, I like- Oh, I, you know, I, I think, and I, you know, to me, it's who do we want to be the face of Central Berkshire? Basically, that's really the case, you know, who, which is gonna, which candidate's gonna be the best face to the seven communities that we all have to deal with? That's our top choice.
I like John, I think he could be, I think the, the smaller towns in the district could have a good relationship with him. He's rural. And I feel that his interview was, yeah, it wasn't the best, but some people just don't interview very well. And I wouldn't hold that against him, but he has a lot of experience as being in that position. Mike, I also felt that his answers were scripted. But that's, that shows me that, that he's very prepared for, I guess, for anything, if he's prepared for this. And maybe a little too much data-driven for me and for some others. You know, I work out in fields, and so I'm field-driven, sort of. And then Matt, I think he has great experience in Pittsfield, Pittsfield's and Deconic are doing well. I like the fact that he's trying to move students towards being more career-driven. I think that's a good plus right now, where education should really start focusing on also, along with other areas of education, is more hands-on career. Yeah, I think they're all good, I mean, all three of them, it's gonna be a tough choice. They all have a lot of positives and very little negatives, I could say.
Yeah. Thanks. Liz, you're up.
I'm last, I don't know what I-
Okay, you still gotta go, okay. Yes, we have three great candidates, it's a great problem to have. Just my bullet points in terms of John, great that he works with rural districts, that he's a superintendent, but really no high school experience. And even at the meet-and-greet, which was, very few of us showed up to, I was like trying to spoon-feed him, like, let's, you know, what do we, how do we lead them to this, and it just kept going back to the, you know, junior high, and like, well, Nescus Middle School, well, the junior high, and then, well, what about the high school, and then he talked about the elementary again, so I just felt like it was his experience is all in, you know, the elementary school. But he does have the experience with being a superintendent and the rural areas. In terms of being the face of the district, I don't know how he could, how he would do, I don't do this well either, communicating to each town. In terms of Mike, obviously, he'd hit the ground running. I thought he was scripted because he was nervous. And I have not really seen him nervous, but to me, he looked nervous at first, like, speaking mile-a-minute, I mean, he speaks quickly anyway, but he wanted to do his homework, you know, he, it didn't bother me that he was so scripted. He is very data-driven, but from what I hear, he can break it down to the layperson when needed. He has, like in my other conversations with him, he spoke about soft skills being very important to teach our kids. So, that's great. We, we talked about not wanting to lose him, but I mean, if we chose a different superintendent, there's no guarantee that they would keep him on, correct? Right, I mean, the superintendent gets to pick the assistant superintendent? Is that correct? No?
There wouldn't be an opening, right?
Oh, okay, all right, he would have to resign. You know, okay. Got it, okay. Thank you. In terms of Matt, I like him, very personable, he did do his homework, he had it written out there, but he didn't need it all the time, which shows how he could come to the towns and talk to the towns and look people in the eye. At the meet-and-greet, he was looking everyone in the eye, he was not doing that today, but, you know, nerves or whatever, like, I could go, look over here, look. But very different Pittsfield from us. So, that would be a learning curve, although he did grow up here. So, I do like the idea of having our high school graduates be more career-ready. I don't know how many careers you can get with the type of education that we supply anyway, but some of those other skills, like, I mean, you know, like, we're not graduating mechanics, in other words, what I mean, like, they're not gonna go out and get a a well-paying job with a Gen Ed high school degree. job with a Gen Ed high school degree. But I li, I, I thought he was very personable. I think he would be a great face for the district. I think Mike would be as well. I just don't think John has the experience with the full range of K through 12.
Thanks. I'll give a couple thoughts that I have to, and, and also address some of the concerns that were out there. Not all of you were at the, at the screening committee interviews where those questions, they don't have ahead of time. And to answer Mike's scripted, I was surprised he was going scripted because he did a really great job there, not knowing the questions ahead of time and just speaking off the cuff passionately, did a really good job there. So he'd come off a little bit, but he obviously prepared tonight. The other thing I would address is John, obviously, the experience with the piece, but certainly the, the affectation that Jake talks about is a, is, you know, that's, that's his personality. I mean, he's a great guy. I, I got to know him quite well, having spent the day with him and talking to him several times on the phone. All three of them are great. Like I said, we have a huge issue. But when I, my, and a couple of people brought it up here too, as I went through the site visits, walked around, John's affectation is pretty obvious. And at the high school level, I think that would be not a great, not a great fit at the high school level. At the elementary school level, I think it's okay. At the high school and middle school level, I think that it, it's a very low energy affectation, you know, just very gentle, nice guy, just low, low energy. And I think that's, that is palatable in, in that situation. You know, Mike, again, like I said, he's, he did well at the, at the screening one. I, I think scripted here, he had his data, he knows his stuff and he, great. Matt, Matt Bishop, I mean, also, you know, did a, did a phenomenal job both at the screen and here. Again, we have a really challenge on our hands. For him, he's, he's a Dalton guy, which can be a problem in our district. But I do think he actually answered, one of the questions that the screening committee is, can you name all seven towns? And he was able to name all seven towns, which is a positive for, because the other Dalton guy couldn't name all seven towns, which I thought was a really bad idea. But anyways, so Matt's a, a great guy as well. I think it's a challenge between, between those two as far as the energy level goes that I can see. One of the things that I would say that, or for me anyways, in my experience of hiring people and every time you hire somebody new, it is an unknown. You don't know how, and they, they could be the, they could interview the best you ever had, but you, they walk in the door, you just don't know. I don't think it's a big risk, but it is a risk. And in, in my opinion, we have Mike, who is capable, he's an unknown, he's not an unknown, he's very well known, and he has the, the, the skill set, you know, each one has, has a piece that we need, right? But not every, not, 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 none of them have every piece that we need. John has the incredible exposure to rural towns and budgets and five paychecks? I mean, it's just crazy, right? But I mean, he works with the, all those towns. That's an incredible piece to have. I think he, he's lacking the high school side. You know, maybe he probably worked in a high school, but leadership wise and that affectation I talked about. Matt, Matt doesn't have it. He's not a superintendent either. And he has the, he has the urban school district experience, which is completely different than our experience, but I, I think he could hit the ground running as well. And I think, I think Mike doesn't have the superintendency experience. Both those guys are kind of in the same position. They're at that point where they're gonna be a superintendent somewhere, you know? And I think we have a known and I, you know, I think we have those, that, that piece there is, is ready to go. But anyways, that's, that's my, I was able to get my piece out. So, the next step is to nominate and vote on a candidate. So the way to do this is, if somebody wants to make a motion to nominate a candidate, I'd like to see your hands raised for nomination. Yeah, what?
Is that all the discussion we're gonna have?
We can just talk more. Do we wanna go back and, we have more?
Yeah, I, I think, you know, as different people talk.
Okay.
Different things come up, you know, and I think, you know, I know it's late. We've been here a long time, but this is the most important thing we're doing.
Yeah, you're right.
And, you know, I know we can't really do straw polls, but, you know, there might be some way of kind of coming up with some consensus through our discussions and, and really kind of coalesce around, around one, one candidate.
Yeah, I just wanna respond to one thing that was said a couple times, and that was the notion that, you know, Pittsfield and us, right? We've hired a ton of people out of Pittsfield. They're sitting over here.
Mike was out of Pittsfield.
Yes.
So I think we have to just kind of take that off the table, to be honest with you. Talking about the quality of the people. Thank you.
You're in.
Okay.
Well, you, you talking about motion or you?
No, I was gonna comment.
Comment, okay. All right. Let's keep going with comments. The data point, I think, is valid.
Okay. People were talking about how data-driven Mike is, and he is. And I appreciate that because we do live in a data-driven society. But he also mentioned mind and heart. And I think he walks that talk. He shows that every day. He's got a, a great mind and a loving heart. And to me, that's a winning combination.
My comment was kind of similar to what Barbara was saying is, we really haven't talked about what culture we want to see in our school going forward. And I, I don't really know if John spoke to the culture of the education and of the students, what he would bring to the table. I think Matt talked about it a bit, but then again, it's a, it's a little bit different culture. He, he was talking about building up to have a, a vision of the culture we want to have for our students. I think Mike really hit the nail on the head when it came to having a vision of what we want to see in the schools, or at least what I want to see in the schools culturally, and building on top of what we already have, instead of having something started out and then trying to make it into a vision that we're not sure that we are comfortable with.
Any else? Comments? Go ahead, Liz.
No, so I appreciate that this was left at our seats about the application, what we're looking for. And then just reading through the selection criteria. I mean, for me right now, it's a toss-up between Mike and Matt, but in reading through the selection criteria, I think that Mike may just fit it a little bit better.
I was looking at that too. Yeah. I appreciate that the, the.
It was, yeah, you sit down earlier. Yeah, Dave, again.
I don't think any of them are known, wanted, known candidates. I mean, we know Mike, because he's working in the district, he's at our meetings, we know Mike, but we don't know Mike as a superintendent. And he really doesn't have the administrative experience that the other two candidates do have. And again, I'll go back to what I said earlier. I, I think experience really matters. And we talk about this, about Mike's role and what he's done and what he's accomplished in this district, and he should get a lot of credit for that. But it seems to me that we, we sort of talk about that as if he wouldn't continue to do the work if we chose one of the other two candidates. And I think if, if we have Mike continuing the programs that he's developing, I, I think he said he's, he's not quite, like, they're still in development, they're still in process, these, these programs and systems that are coming online that, that he's implemented. I think if, if we have Mike in that role, especially supporting either John or Matt, I think we have a really powerhouse team. But I think it was Todd that said, you know, if we, if we move Mike, then we've got to fill that position that Mike is doing a very good job at right now. And, and so it does kind of set us back, even though we, we, we move him forward, it does set us back, because then we have to go back and, and fill that role. We have, we are losing a position that, that he's really strong at right now. So I, I would, I would go for, I would pick John or Matt.
I think just two comments on, two comments on two separate comments.
So much. First, I would say, that's true. Mike is doing a very good job in the position that he's in. But I think two things are also true. One, he is an incredible candidate. It doesn't matter for what district. And I, I think he is ready and certainly sort of, you know, chomping at the bit to, to take on the next challenge. And, and so I suspect that we wouldn't be able to hold on to him for too much longer in, in the assistant superintendent position. I also think that sometimes we can't hold someone back because they're good at what they're doing. That's almost like, don't be good at your job. So I think that's, that's one challenge. But I think the other thing, and something that's sort of been sitting in the back of my mind for, for a while now, is I did quite like the, the point that Mike brought up about, you know, you need to educate the mind, but i, if you don't also include the heart in the matter, it's, you know, it's not really an education. And I think one thing, just being on the curriculum subcommittee and interacting with some of the teachers, I, I do feel like sometimes that is the piece where his data-driven mindset is, creates a, a bit of a challenge, because there are times where teachers will say, you know, I, I feel like I'm kind of losing my soul here, just reading off of a scripted curriculum. And so, yeah. That's a internal struggle.
All right, Liz.
Give me half a second. Something based on what David had just said, oh, about the possibility of losing someone, is, reality is, is that we can't bank on Mike staying in his position as assistant superintendent. And I think that's kind of what Charles is going toward is, you know, he, he's a good candidate. Someone's gonna swoop him up if he's looking to move into that superintendent type of position. So I mean, what, either he gets moved up to it here, or he might very well go somewhere else. And I'm not saying that that is a, you know, threat or anything like that, but it's a reality of a possibility. And we can't guarantee that he would stay. So we might not have that continuation either way.
I mean, I was gonna sort of, I've been struggling with this myself the last few days, thinking, like, looking at the resumes and thinking of the jobs they do. And I don't want to hold Mike back, because I do think he's ready. And I don't think it's fair to pigeonhole him as superintendent because of the data work that he does that is so valuable to us. And I don't want to lose him, but I don't want to feel like my decision is based off solely to promote him, because I don't want to lose him. So I've been struggling with the fact that I think two of these candidates would make a very strong team. I just don't know which fashion it would work out best in, because if we promote him, is the person that fills his position going to be as adept at handling and, and drilling into all of that data as Mike is? Because the job of superintendent isn't to do all of that data drilling. So I'm extremely torn right now.
Yeah, I would, I think that Mike, Mike really wants to be superintendent. I mean, he's so much so that I'm, I'm modestly, I, I'm a little, I'm a little worried about how much he wants the job. And so I suspect that if he doesn't get the job, it won't be this year, but he'll, he'll probably go on and become a superintendent. But I would agree with what David said. All of them are unknowns as what they will be as superintendents. I mean, guy may be great at his job, as what he's doing now, but superintendency is a different job. It's a different job. And you've got to relate to a whole bunch of different people outside of the school. He does a great job relating to the people inside the school, and you certainly want that from a superintendent. But with this district, you got seven towns you got to deal with. And it's gonna get tougher to deal with these towns as time goes on. There's no doubt about that. I mean, economics are, are not going in the right direction and towns are gonna get more strapped and that question about what do you do in one town wants not to pay, you know, what happens with that when three towns don't want to pay? So there's no guarantee with, with any of them. And, but I would agree that at one point in time, Mike will leave modestly sooner as opposed to a lot later unless, unless something else happens, but.
Well, I just wanted, just a couple things there. When I made the comment of unknowns, speaking about hiring somebody unknown, when I say unknown, I mean, we know the personality, the personality works with the people that are here. When you hire somebody in, you don't know that their personality is gonna mesh with the people that are here. That was the unknown, not unknown. They're all unknown superintendents except for John. It's a different reason. I'll also add that, I, you go back to dimension, which is a real big plus, plus for me, is Mike's experience as a committee, school committee member, finance chair in a rural district, getting the towns' budgets passed in a rural district. So he has that experience akin to what John has at a different role, but in a role that we understand, going out and talking to towns. So I think that's, that, that fills a little bit of that gap there. The unknowns I was talking about was, when you hire somebody from the outside that you haven't been working with on a day-to-day basis for a number of years, you don't know how they're gonna fit in culturally with your existing culture. That's what I'm talking about. And Mike is a known in that respect, and the other two are not. Do I think they fit in? Fine, they're both really good, strong people, but he's not, they are unknown in that respect, and Mike is not. That was my point. Any, anybody else?
More just a comment around experience in general. And it's a little more of a, a story, and I'm a little biased in this story, but my wife is an educator, a teacher at Pittsfield. I think she's phenomenal. She always tells me a story that somebody took a chance on her, right? And she is, in my opinion, and many of her students, an amazing educator. But she didn't have that experience when she was first chosen, right? Nobody did. And so I understand the importance in, in this case of why someone with experience in this, at this level is, is important. But when I think of the future and going forward too, I think we're entering a very different landscape for, for what, both the budget, both student needs, education in general. And so we're going to need some really innovative approaches and, and innovative thoughts around what that is. And my leaning is more towards folks who, they haven't been given that chance yet to, to really show what they might be able to bring to the table.
Good point.
Yeah, I just wanted to make, can I make two quick points? I just.
Sure.
One is, don't worry about the assistant superintendent. Hire the best person. End of story.
Right.
And so we have to pick the best person for the job and just go with that, because all the other stuff, people are speculating about, we don't know that's gonna happen. We don't know that's gonna be super tensey open. We don't know anyone's gonna leave or come or whatever. So just hire the best person, I might say. And I, I also would say the second point is, I think, you know, as a hiring manager for lots of years, this, this tension between experience potential is always one that you, 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 you struggle with, right? And so often you go with raw potential, because the growth, you know, the energy, the creativity, whatever it brings. And there's times in which you have to decide what is it you need. At this moment in time, we need experience, we need stability, we need whatever. So I don't have, I'm, I'm not really answering any questions around where we're leaning. I, I, you know, I think you all know where probably I land, which is with John, which is not, I, I realize John's not gonna get the job. So I'm, I'm certainly gonna support the committee as we go forward. It's just hard for me to look past experience at this point in job with someone, at this point in time, with someone who's got seven years of experience. And really, again, as I said earlier, an unblemished record, really, there's no, there's no skeletons there, you know? By the way, I think if I read all the, the, the reference checks correctly, every single one of the references said, we'd hate to see that person leave. So it's, you know, it was really very high endorsements from everyone. We want this person to stay in our district or stay where they are. So I think it's, anyways, leave it there.
Yeah.
Yeah. Any, any other comment? So can I get any motion from somebody to nominate somebody?
James wisely.
Go ahead.
I would like.
You only wanna put up your hand.
You're gonna, you're gonna nominate John?
I would like to nominate Matt. Matt Bishop, Dr. Bishop, for the position of superintendent, Sir, Central Berkshire.
All in favor?
We have a second.
Did I get a second?
Let's discuss, we're discussing.
All in favor?
There's a discussion.
A discussion, sorry.
Or discussion.
Just discussion on the motion?
Yeah.
The candidate.
Yeah, I'm, I'm putting that in as a candidate. I like, like, you know, I'm, I'm kind of with Jake on that. I like John a lot, I, I don't hear that from the rest of the committee. I like them all, there's worse problems to have than, than trying to pick these three. I, I think Matt brings a lot of energy, brings a lot of experience, brings a lot of innovative things, we say, with pathways and whatnot, and I, I think he'd be great, I think he'd be really great for our district.
More discussion? It's not who we are though, we're not a vocational school district, we're an academic school district. We need, it's wonderful that Matt did that, it's iconic, it's terrific, but it doesn't necessarily apply to Central Berkshire.
Any other? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
What are we voting?
First.
Yes, for, no.
Do, do a roll call vote. So, you know, want to read the motion? Central Berkshire Regional School Committee selects Matt Bishop as the superintendent of Central Berkshire Regional School District pending successful contract negotiations. Can I get a roll call vote, please?
Yeah. Sit here so you can see. Dr. Craft Reese?
No.
Charlotte Crane?
Yes.
Dr. Everwine?
Yes.
Todd Emerson?
No.
Mr. Ferella?
No.
Ellen Ladizori?
Yes.
Elizabeth Lounsbury?
No.
John Mason? Stephen Marantz?
Yes.
Elizabeth Oaks?
No.
Robert Ronzio? Mr. Stewart?
Yes.
Sarah Tucker?
No.
Kimberly Weatherall?
Yes.
Rich Peters, you'd be, let me see, you've got one, two.
I'm a no.
You're a no. Okay, so one, two, three, four, five, six are yes. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven are no.
I can carry. Can I get another motion for? Barbara?
I need the motion to nominate Mike as superintendent.
A motion in a second. Any discussion? On this one? Roll call vote, please.
Dr. Craft Reese?
Yes.
Charlotte Crane?
Yes.
Dr. Everwine?
Yes.
Todd Emerson?
Yes.
Mr. Ferella?
Yes.
Ellen Ladizori?
Yes.
Elizabeth Lounsbury?
Yes.
John Mason? Stephen Marantz?
Yes.
Elizabeth Oaks?
Yes.
Mr. Stewart?
Yes.
Sarah Tucker?
Yes.
Kimberly Weatherall?
Yes.
Rich Peters?
Yes.
Yeah, I hear it.
Matt, comment now, do you mind if I make a comment? I just wanna applaud you.
Guys, give me a few minutes. One of the things I have to do is I have to call the candidate to make sure he accepts the offer, and otherwise we have to vote again, so.
Involved in him, so.
Mike did accept. I did call both the other candidates and thank them, I mean, it was really, actually a great debate by everybody. I mean, obviously we had a close vote. Yeah, it was a tough decision for all of us, so, yeah, next Barbara.
May I just say thank you very much for leading us through this process?
Thank you.
Really good.
Hopefully. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Almost.
At the same time.
Thank you all for the time.